We're just about there, so I'm just gonna read some quick procedural items. In accordance with the Town of Drakken Town Charter and general bylaws, notice of the 2025 Drakken Spring Annual Town Meeting has been duly posted, and we do have a quorum registered.
And then some.
And then some. Articles in the warrant are to be acted in the order in which they appear unless otherwise determined by the meeting. All motions concerning the expenditure of money must be in writing; all other motions shall be in writing if so desired by the moderator. No person shall speak for more than five minutes unless extended by vote of the meeting or more than once to any question to the exclusion of others wishing to speak. All non-resident speakers must identify themselves prior to speaking on an article. I shall deter— all votes are gonna be electronic because of the overflow room, so we're gonna use our clickers for every vote. If you have the clicker that is like this and does not have the Drakken seal, you have to be in here. If you have one with the seal of Drakken, you have to be in the overflow room. Just 'cause of the internet connection, only the one with the Drakken seal will work in the overflow room. No vote shall be reconsidered except upon notice given within one hour after the vote is passed. A motion to reconsider must receive two-thirds majority to prevail. Motion to dissolve the meeting shall not be in order until every article has been duly considered and acted upon positively or negatively, or by postponement or referral to a later town meeting. And, just a reminder, babysitting does end at 9:30. The students do have to leave by 9:30. There are still people checking in. That's the holdup.
I'm being told by a town clerk it'll be less than five minutes. There's about fifteen to twenty people that have to be checked in.
The IT Madison who runs the clickers, electronic voting, is helping people with those clickers. And so we can't start till she has checked everyone in. It's to be fair to everyone, democracy is messy.
She's right there. She's right there.
Meeting's called to order. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up a point of order. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the agenda as presented in the warrant and to amend said agenda to begin with Article 27. Which is reconsideration of previous article zoning by law amendments of the MBTA Communities Overlay District, and I would like that followed directly by Article 28, which is MBTA Communities Overlay District.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second!
Please present your motion to the clerk's office. Is there discussion on the motion? Sir? Sir? We need your name for the paperwork, please.
And address.
And your address.
I am Gerard Casista, and I'm at 81 Farm Pond Road in Drakken.
Thank you. On discussion. Here and see it, no discussion. This will be an electronic vote. So she's typing it in, so we can all read the motion, and then we'll vote on it. I'll say it. Doctor Casista? Where's the gentleman who made the motion? Oh, he's in the overflow room. If you come back, sir.
That's all right. I got his name.
Madison has to do it, and she's currently typing in the amendment.
So Madison is typing in this amendment. As soon as she's done, the moderator will do the test on the remotes, and then we'll go and act rate on this motion for everybody. Just gotta give her a couple of minutes to type it in, and we can get through it. Thank you for your patience.
Okay. So, we all have our clickers? Yes? If you are in favor of the motion which would move 27 and 28 to the front, you wanna click the green button. If you are opposed to the motion, you do not want to take 27 and 28 out of order, you will press the red button. Voting is now open. The motion passes. Article 27, the Assistant Town Manager.
I move that the town vote per the requirements of the Town of Drakken Charter, Article 2, Section 2, to consider the MBTA Communities Overlay District warrant article as recommended by the Planning Board per MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Motion has been made, and is there a second?
Second.
Second. On discussion.
Yep. So as you all know, the Town of Drakken has a second step that is mandated here tonight. The first step was for the Planning Board to vote to recommend that this come-back-to-town meeting, which happened on April 23rd. Tonight, you are being asked to vote on whether this Article 28 is brought forward for discussion again. It requires a two-thirds majority. Next slide, please. And then the next slide. So I wanted to just take a moment to highlight for you some of the things that we now know that we did not know back in November. At that point, town meeting voters primarily wanted to wait and see what happened with the Town of Milton court case, which has now been resolved. The judicial court has ruled that the Act is constitutional and compliance is mandatory. They have affirmed that the Attorney General can use any of the tools within their power to enforce such, and they required that the regulations be rewritten. Next slide. So that has happened. Those steps have moved forward. Not a lot has changed for Drakken following that decision. We didn't see any changes in the regulations that impacted anything in this community, and the Attorney General has made it clear that they intend to use all of the tools that they have to force compliance. So nothing effectively has changed currently. That is all for presentation. That's the next one. You can go back. Yep.
Any other discussion on the motion? No, if people wanna speak. There's no discussion on the motion? Yes, come down, please. No, I'm not gonna recognize that motion. All motions need to be made from the podium, including motions to move the question. Come down. Make sure you state your name and address for the record.
I'm Alex Verres. I'd like to speak on the motion.
Please.
Okay. Can I turn this around?
Uh, space the moderator.
Okay. So I—the whole speech will be to you?
Yes.
Okay. All right, 96 Frederick Street. I'm against resubmitting the rejected MBTA zoning plan for a second vote. So here we are again. Six months ago, we met here to exercise our right to vote, and we rejected this exact same plan. Over the last six months, our town leaders have not addressed any of our concerns with this high-density housing zoning plan. Also, our town leaders have not provided any estimated financial cost data for this zoning plan. How can we be expected to vote on a plan that we have no idea what the cost will be for the town? Now, what have our town leaders done in the last six months? Some have voted to bring back the zoning plan to the town meeting and to try to overturn our previous vote. Allowing this rejected article to be resubmitted would set a precedent that our legal valid votes are meaningless. By resubmitting this rejected plan, our town leaders are sending the message that they don't care what we think, they know better than the people of the town. We deserve town leaders that respect our town meeting vote. Our town leaders have given all kinds of reasons why we should revote in this rejected article. They say that Drakken voters didn't know how to use the voting clickers. We Drakken voters aren't stupid. We know how to use a clicker. They say that Drakken voters were confused, they didn't know that they were— what they were voting on. We Drakken voters were not dazed and confused. We knew exactly what we were voting on. We made two votes in the zoning plan at the last town meeting. The first was whether to postpone the vote and wait for additional information. We voted no to postponing the vote, so we could get to the main article, the zoning plan, and reject it outright. They say that the no vote was close, being that it was by seven votes. We Drakken voters know what a simple majority is. It just needs to win by one vote. It doesn't matter if it's one vote, seven votes, seventy votes, or seven hundred votes. If the vote was reversed and the plan had passed by seven votes, do you think that our leaders would be here tonight trying to nullify that vote? I don't think so. Town meeting is an amazing process. Six months ago, town meeting gave us the power to reject a plan that we felt was too costly for our town. If we allow our government to overturn our town meeting vote, it would make a joke of our town meeting process. It would set a bad precedent for the future. Government could bring back rejected articles to town meeting every six months until they get the vote they want. We need to preserve the integrity of the town meeting process. This vote that we're discussing requires a two-thirds majority. Now, you might wonder, why does this vote require a two-thirds majority as opposed to a simple majority? It's because our town charter states that if the government wants to bring back a rejected article to town meeting within one year, it requires a two-thirds majority. The authors of the town charter put in this higher threshold, the two-thirds majority, for situations like tonight, when government abuses their power and attempts to overturn a previous town meeting vote. They didn't wanna make this too easy for the government. To me, this vote tonight is not about whether you agree or disagree with the zoning plan. It's a voting rights issue. It's about, are we gonna let our government abuse their power and overturn our previous vote? It's a radical act when a government nullifies the people's vote. In conclusion, please join me in voting no. Let's show our leaders that we will defend our voting rights. Thank you all for listening, and thank you for being here tonight.
Please. Send your name and address for the record, please.
East Salantane, Malwood Avenue in Drakken, 99. That's a hard act to follow.
If you pull the mic down so people can hear you.
Okay. That's a hard act to follow, but here goes. Okay, so I'm against bringing Article 28 back for a revote. We already voted no on this last— We already voted no on the last November's town meeting, yet the very same plan is being brought back for a revote tonight. What bothers me the most is that it appears as though the leaders of this town, not all, but most, are intentionally disregarding the input and concerns of the tax-paying residents of Drakken. Besides bringing back the very same plan, early on in the planning stages, the town posted a survey asking residents to choose zoning locations. The survey was posted on the town website and at the library. Needless to say, not many people saw it, so subsequently, they received a total of 119 responses. Now compare that outreach to when they mailed the pro-MBTA material along with our tax bills that reached 12,000 households. And for many people, that was the first time they had heard of the MBTA. And by that time, the zones had already been chosen, but they did not choose the zones that were picked by the 119 residents who responded to the survey, which was Collinsville and Tennis Plaza. They decided to choose different locations. They justified this by saying they used rank-choice voting, which is basically means manipulating the votes until you get the results that you want. And what they wanted, and what they chose for us, was Loon Hill and the Tennis Plaza. If they truly wanted to include the residents in the MBTA planning process, why wouldn't they send the surveys out and the tax bills? I don't know about you, but this seems intentional, as if they're trying to keep the people out of the equation. By voting no, we will be given another opportunity to have more input in what happens to our town. If we allow them to override us now, it sets precedence for all town meeting votes going forward. Apparently, they did not hear us the last time, so let's say it louder and vote no again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Foster, 65 Coach Drive. Before I speak, I do have a question, and I'll address it to you, Mr. Flaherty. I'm not sure who will answer it. I feel that something needs to be addressed, because since Ms. Menugian got to speak to penalties from the state, there was some information posted online by a member of the Zoning by Law Review Committee this weekend. A member of the committee who touts himself as an expert, Phil Tebow.
Let's stick to the facts, please.
Okay, but I just wanted to clarify something so that I could clarify the points she made about the penalties. Could Town Council answer, is there a penalty within the law where the state can come in and create and make the entire Town of Drakken an MBTA zone? Because that was what was put forward by a board member online to influence votes tonight.
Selectman Taylor?
This question did come to the attention of the town. The town manager, myself, looked at it today, and we reached out to Town Council. The concern that if the town does not pass the MBTA zoning relief article tonight, that the state guidelines require multifamily housing throughout the entire town, and Town Council's answer that this is not an accurate statement of the current law.
Thank you for clarification, and hopefully the board member will correct his statement online.
Please proceed.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on an issue that is very important for our town and that I am very passionate about. Before I get speaking, I do wanna urge all of the residents here to not leave town meeting until it is adjourned. In other towns, the motions have been brought back after significant numbers of people have left, and then the motion has been lost. Last November, we voted no. While many of us voted no, there were many reasons for those votes. We voted no because we did not like the zones that were chosen. We voted no because we had no financial impact information on what would happen if it was passed. We voted no because there were still outstanding legal issues in the court's hands, but according to the town, they think that is the only reason we voted no. We voted no because of the blatant overreach of this state. For five-plus months since that vote, the majority of our town representatives and employees have simply wrung their hands and decided not to address any of the above issues. They loudly complained that they had worked way too hard on the original plan to choose something new. Some members on the board blatantly state on social media that no other plans suggested by residents will be as good as the one they made, and the issue was kicked between boards with direction with—from some elected town officials to stay the course with the original plan. They now have the gall to bring the same plan back to town meeting and threaten to blame the destruction of town finances on anyone that votes no to considering it again. The boards are responsible for the position we are in tonight. We told them what we wanted, and they did not listen to the no vote. The residents are not to blame for not wanting to vote on the same plan again without being listened to. The boards in town had many options to choose from, and they chose the one most insulting to the voters of this town, taking another bite at the apple with the same plan with financial threats aimed at us for not bending the knee. This same tactic has been used in other towns for this issue and other issues. Town governments are getting used to the playbook of disenfranchising their voters and overturning the will of the people to get their way. Most recently, in Groton, a friend of mine told me that the people voted down two overrides by ballot. The Board of Selectmen of Groton held an emergency meeting almost immediately to find out how to hold another vote on the same overrides as soon as possible. My understanding is that there is a special town meeting in Groton on June 23rd to vote again on overrides that their residents voted down.
Let's keep the discussion limited to Drakken, please.
This is not the way this is supposed to work, and is becoming popular in town after town, which is the point of me speaking to that. Tonight, whether you are here for or against the current MBTA zoning plan, you need to think about something. We set a precedent tonight and send a message to our elected appointed and appointed town representatives and employees. Either this is acceptable to force the same thing to vote, or it is not. If we allow this to happen, they will use this tactic again and again, and you may not be interested in this issue, or you may even be for it. But there will be a time where our town representatives will want to overturn your vote on one issue or another. Tonight, we send our approval for such— Tonight, we give our approval for such tactics if we vote yes on Article 27. Or we can send a deafening message that any such tactic will fail simply for the fact of trying to circumvent the will of the people. Decide tonight the message you want to send, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much. I'm Kate Crawford, 41 Hillcrest Road.
Thank you.
I am urging a yes vote to discuss and reconsider the MBTA law that was voted into noncompliance last fall. The State Supreme Court upheld the constitutionality of the MBTA Communities Act. Noncompliance has very serious consequences. Drakken is heavily dependent upon Massachusetts state grants, and continued noncompliance will only make our current very tricky financial situation even more difficult. Now that we have more information, we know that this law is in fact legal, I feel as a citizen of Drakken, I want my vote and my input to matter now that this new information has developed since November. So, please, I'm urging a vote to bring this matter up, and so vote yes to talk about it more. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? Name and address for the record, please.
Joelle Neeson, 127—
Oh, a little closer, please.
Joelle Neeson, 127 Lexington Road.
Thank you.
I first want to acknowledge the Select Board, a board that not—did not vote unanimously to bring this article to town meeting. I want to thank those who accepted the vote in November and respect the choice of the voters. For those who have been following this battle, we've heard a lot of reasons why we should do a redo of November's vote. There were problems with the clickers. People couldn't figure out how to use the clickers. People were confused by the questions. A lot of excuses given to justify, in their own minds, bringing back the same exact plan that we've already said no to. You may wonder why the Zoning by Law Review Committee has not used the last six months to try to create a plan that the residents can support, or to provide answers to questions that contributed to the no vote in November. Questions regarding the town's infrastructure, emergency services, and most importantly, the cost of this plan, a cost that we'll be burdened with by us. Has a cost analysis been done? There is never a response when the question is asked. Have zones been reviewed for better options? Not that we are aware of. The original zones chosen by their dismal survey were disregarded and changed to the zones the boards wanted. Why would they look to change them? We've heard numerous times that there are no changes because of all the hard work that was put in to create the plan they want you to revote on again tonight. I have no doubt that a lot of people spent a lot of time on this plan. It's their job. I will bet that many of those sitting here tonight have worked on projects at their own job, only to have the boss tell you, "That's not exactly what we're looking for. Try again." What would happen if you went back six months later with the exact same project? You wouldn't, because it's your job to do better. It's your job. I find it unbelievable that we are sitting here again tonight. Whether you are pro-mandate or con-mandate, there is no bearing—has no bearing on this article. A yes vote on this article will tell the town that you are complacent with their dismissal of the November vote because it was not the outcome they wanted. A no vote will make them understand our opinions and our votes matter. Make your voice heard. Vote no.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, Joshua Marcus, 78 Frederick Street.
Thank you.
Number 43.
Thank you.
I guess what I just wanted to check was, have the plans for this been hidden from us? Have they not been online where we could all access them? Have we been able to see that?
I assume that's a rhetorical question?
Everyone in front of me has been saying that we don't have any information on this when we've been able to read it for months, and so I'm just confused by what's transpired. I just wanna make sure I'm not confused on that. We have been able to read it. We have been able to hear information about this. If we cared about it, and if we cared about our communities, if we showed up for our communities, if we actually cared about what our children are doing in our schools, and what they need, and what we need for our communities in order to have a tax base in order to support the type of services we've grown accustomed to, we need to have affordable housing in order to have public servants who will have housing in our district. We need this. We need this badly. We do not have the sort of infrastructure and—
The gentleman is out of order.
And that is a shame. That is a shame you should be ashamed of.
Sir, address the moderator, please.
Thank you. I am ashamed to live in a community that does not have enough housing to house the people who work for us to make our lives better. We have schoolteachers, firefighters, and other people who are in service industry jobs here who cannot afford to live in our own community, and that is unacceptable to me. And so I am glad that we are doing something in order to make this better. Now, that being said, I think not enough has been said about the penalties associated with this, and also the fact that when we first tabled this, however many months ago, there was some question about whether or not this was actually a legal and enforceable action by the state. And it seems to me, from what information we've gotten back, it has come back resoundingly the answer, yes, it is enforceable. We will lose grant money. They will have some sort of plan—I don't know what it is, they don't know what it is. It may not be the whole district, but there will be some sort of plan, and we won't have a say over it, and that is disregarding the will of the people. We have put people who are experts in charge of doing this, who have shown up and put in their time in order to give us the best plan that we could come up with. Do you go to the architect of your house and tell him, "No, no, I don't think we need a buttress here because it'll be fine without it"? Do I go to the plumber and tell him, "I don't need a valve here because I don't think it's gonna drip here because I don't believe in Van der Waals forces"? No. You let the expert give you the best plan so that you have the best community. These people went and spent a lot of time trying to put together something that would be acceptable and would be fair, and would hopefully cause the least amount of disruption for all of us. I think that we deserve to hear it, even if we end up disagreeing with it in the end. And I think that's not too much to ask considering what's at stake in terms of the penalties we will face and the benefits we could reap. Thank you very much.
Town meeting members will respect the people's opinions, rights to express their opinions without interruption. Please do not interrupt a speaker, just as you will not be interrupted. Sir.
First of all, I wanna give you this—
Name and address for the record, please.
Clum Canal, 9 Wimbledon Crossing.
I want you to read that. Please speak into the microphone to the moderator.
This is what I'm contesting, so I'm gonna—I wrote this out, so I'm just gonna read it because it's gonna be easier. Okay? I'm a retired Drakken firefighter, 36 years of dedicated service, retired nine years ago, 68 years old, voting for 50 years in this town. Never missed a vote in 51 years. 51 years ago today, I graduated from Drakken High. Go Middies. Tonight, I ask all of you to defeat this article on reconsider—on reconsideration of voting for this article for the MBTA housing requirements. I live in one of the war zones, that's what I call it, Tennis Plaza, Wimbledon Crossing. I grew up in Kenwood, and I've lived out here for 31 years. There's seven buildings, 500 condos, 66— There's seven buildings, 500 condos, 66 single-family houses, a storage facility, and two strip malls. That's enough. We're not putting anything else there. Apparently, when I graduated from this facility, 51 years ago, now English is a second language, I left here knowing right from wrong, left from right, up from down, and yes from no. Number one. People can read, either people can read, people read, but they don't comprehend what they read, or they read, understand, but don't like what the wording of the article of law, policies, procedures, or protocols, and they maneuver, manipulate, and circumvent the wording. Well, you can't do that. Okay? On November 4th, 2024, up in the back of the auditorium, I was president, and after a lengthy discussion on this debate, the article was voted on and defeated by seven votes. That's it. Okay? In April of 2025, the selectmen decided to take another vote to reconsider. Why? You have to, you have to bring the vote back to the town meeting. That's what's, whatever's adopted on a town meeting floor, that's where you have to bring it back, either to change it or to amend it. You can't do it at a selectman's meeting, at a planning board meeting, at a coffee shop, somebody's kitchen. That's not democracy. It's getting better. On April 9th, 2025, the planning board met after a discussion and debate regarding the Wendy's fiasco, another joke. And then they changed to the MBTA after lengthy discussions, so it was getting late. So people were up asking questions, rezoning the article, about the, people asking, rezoning about the question, loading, uh, looking for answers, information, traffic costs, just simple questions. The vice chairman, conducting the meeting, I'm laying in bed listening to this, at 9:15, makes a statement. The woman was just asking a question, a simple question about what's going on in the town. And he makes the statement that it's getting late, let's take a vote and wrap this up. Then he makes the statement, "We're not going to listen to any more, uh, people talking." What the hell is that? Okay? Most disgraceful, disgusting, and disrespectful acts of democracy, and the appointed member of that board should have been, should have been resigned or removed from the board, and the resident deserved an apology. Why are they voting on that again? The town charter, this is the thing that I'm questioning, the town charter adopted in March of 1985, 40 years ago, states Article 2, Section 2, town meeting, any article defeated at a town meeting shall not be considered on its merits by a subsequent town meeting held within one year, in this case, seven months, without a two-thirds vote. So it, so if it's defeated, if, if the, if the request is defeated, it's, it's denied. That's it. That's the end of it. No, no more. As, as, as for compliance, this is the best one. The selectmen, "Oh, we're gonna comply with this law." Let me tell you, that's bull, okay? In November of 2024, the voters of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts overwhelmingly voted 72% to ask for an audit by the state auditor to audit the state legislator's annual budget, the legislative body of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We, the people. Hey, we're the legislative body. We make the decisions. We're paying for it. Okay?
The gentleman's time is about to expire.
We've been ignored and denied by the Attorney General of Massachusetts enforcing this mandate. Why? The Attorney General is the top law enforcement officer in the state and should be terminated for being derelict and dotty, and furthermore, for only interested in protecting the illegal migrants that should have no right to immigration.
The gentleman's time has expired. The gentleman's time-
And I, I got one more paragraph in closing tonight.
The gentleman. Sir, we have a lot of people who want to speak. Nope, nope.
I give him two minutes of my time.
Nope.
In closing this fall tonight, not to start, it's not to start, it's not to start billing tomorrow, the units. This fall is about rezoning the area in town, so billing developers will have a legal, uh, less legal and regulatory system to all the future.
Sir, your time has expired. We need to move on. Your time has expired. Thank you.
All right.
Sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Wogan Portillo, 82 Sawmill Drive, Draken. Uh, I just want to start off with asking you a question, um, just about the, uh, safety in the city. What is the minimum manning for the apparatuses for the fire department?
Excuse me?
Minimum manning for each apparatus.
Uh, I'm not aware of the answer to that question. The fire chief is present? I assume, if you would allow him?
It is relevant.
So the NFBA standard for minimum manning on an apparatus is four. Draken runs with three.
Okay. And you have, what, three pumps, two trucks?
Three pumps, one truck.
One truck. Okay. Uh, so I just want to start off with, uh, where we started off at the beginning. The AG wants compliance. We voted for an audit. The state auditor is trying to do her job and figure out where's this money coming from. It's clearly a not funded law that was put into place, and the AG is trying to stronghold communities to pay for these, you know, giant upscale, uh, residential, uh, density? Where, where, where does this, where does this come from? We have issues with public safety. We are running very thinly in a lot of communities where we don't have enough people to support the density that we're trying to accomplish. We don't have the enough, we don't have enough people now, and now you want to add a huge surplus of individuals? Where does that make any sense? The, the, the whole, the whole compliance of, of, "You will do what we want you to do, or else we're gonna take your funding away"? That's, we have that from, you know, the federal level, now we have that from the state level. It's, enough is enough. If we just comply because they tell us to comply, where are we going with this? Where, where are our human rights when we are clearly voting for something where the state could just be like, "Well, you know, you, you, it's your opinion now, we're just still gonna do it anyway"? We need to make sensible development. When we have high density without the infrastructure, we're, we're gonna run into issues way quicker than estimated, and then when we end up in that hole, where are we gonna do that? We're gonna, we're gonna ask? We're like, "Oh, sorry, guys." It's like, "We need more money now." Uh, so I just want to start off by, uh, or finish by saying that I am voting no on this, and I hope that the residents of the town, which have already voted no, see this and uh, move with the same follow.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Edward Chen, 28 Old Road.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm guessing that not many of us here are on the fence one way or another, and I think many of us have caregiving or other obligations, and so that everyone who wishes to vote can remain long enough to vote, I would like to move to move to question.
There's a motion made to move the questions. Is there a second? All right. This requires a two-thirds vote. Let's please, oh, well. Fire Department Committee has asked that, so the Board of Selectmen did not make a recommendation on this article, and the planning board did recommend approval. So, sir, could you please fill out this motion sheet? So the motion for the record is to move the question. It has been seconded, and in a moment, we will take a vote using the clickers. This cannot be debated. We will take a vote. It's, two-thirds is required. So this is only to move the question. It is not to vote to reconsider. It just means to end debate, and then we will take a final vote on reconsideration. Is that, is that understood?
Yeah.
Okay. So we need to wait a moment for the gentleman to write his motion, and for IT to write the motion onto the PowerPoint, and we will take a vote to move the question. All right, so once again, in a moment, we will vote to move the question. If you are in favor of moving the question to end debate, please vote with the green button. If you do not wish to end debate, please vote with the red button. And again, this requires a two-thirds vote. Be just momentarily. Nope, hold on, I'll tell you. Okay, just to make a correction, the selectmen voted not to recommend that this be reconsidered. Voting is now open. How do, if you vote yes, if you want to re, if you want to end debate, you vote no if you do not want to end debate.
Yes if you want to end the debate, no if you don't.
Voting is now closed. The motion is agreed to, and we will now move to vote on reconsideration. So now, this vote, we will vote again, we're now gonna vote a second time. If, this requires a two-thirds vote. If you wish to reconsider the MBTA law, please vote yes. If you do not want to reconsider the MBTA law, vote no. Is that understood?
Yes.
Okay. So let's give Madison a few moments. Voting is now open. The motion, the motion to reconsider fails. Assistant Town Manager.
I moved that the town of Draken vote to refer Article number 28, MBTA Communities Overlay District, back to the Board of Selectmen.
A motion has been made to move, to refer Article 28 back to the Board of Selectmen. Is there a second? Second. There is a second. On discussion. So to clarify, if you, if you want to, on discussion, Assistant Town Manager.
Yep, yep. So given that Article 27 failed by the two-thirds majority, this is a motion to not talk about MBTA further tonight, and to defer this back to the Select Board for their guidance, direction, input to move it forward in the future.
Just so I can clarify this. You give me a minute to clarify it.
Selectman Taylor has the floor.
Any, any motion on the floor has to have an action. All this action does is kicks it back to the Board of Selectmen so that we can look at it for further review. This does not move this forward at all. This is not an action on accepting the MBTA. This is an action to move the, move it forward to the Selectmen, and I would recommend approval of it.
On, on discussion.
Elizabeth Foster, 65 Coach Drive. I recommend we vote yes, and then we show up at the Select Board meetings and let them know we want them to apply for an exemption or change the zones. Let your voice be heard and make them have an overflow room for the Select Board meetings. Thank you.
On discussion. State your name and address for the record, please.
Rich Cowan, 12 Greeline Avenue. When this was first defeated, I expressed the opinion that the zone should be changed, that we should not come back to town meeting and vote again on the same thing. It'd be a waste of time, a waste of the energy of the committee. And I think the right move is to vote yes on this, to refer it back to the Selectmen to do what they should have done, or to do what the town should have done, uh, you know, five months ago. Thank you.
If I may clarify, the reason why we have to do this procedurally is every article has, something has to happen to it, so we can't just ignore it. So the motion's been made to move it to the Board of Selectmen so that they can decide what happens next.
Vote no.
The gentleman is out of order. Are there any more discussions? Okay, so the motion on the floor, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Pete Clark, 14 Arbor Drive. Of course we want to vote yes, friends. The, uh, the reason being is that this problem isn't gonna go away. Now, despite what everybody thinks, that our town leaders haven't led us or whatever, that's, that's either here nor there. The MBTA overlay program in Massachusetts, which I think is horrible, is not gonna go away. And we have to face it and find a result that we can live with. We're all not gonna agree, but we should be at the point where we at the very least, uh, get, keep the ball rolling in the right direction. That's it.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to, because again, once again, we have to, we cannot just ignore it. All warrant articles must be disposed of in some way. And so this is the motion on the floor. Selectman Taylor has already spoken once, is there any objection? Him speaking twice. Without objection, Selectman Taylor.
Just to clarify, so as the new Chair of the Board of Selectmen, what this article does is it allows for the Selectmen to decide on opening a process for everybody in this room to go to other informal sessions, et cetera, to determine the outcome. This does not condoning the, the zones or anything else. This allows for the Chair of the Board to create an ad hoc committee to get fresh blood, fresh eyes, and fresh people in this room to look at the future of the community. That's all this does.
Julie Woodaxer, 49 Nancy F. So what happens if you vote no? What happens?
If we vote no?
Yeah, if you vote no, what happens?
Let me consult with Council. I'll recess, give me a quick recess. So, I consulted with Town Council DeLuca. If we vote no on the motion to refer it to the Board of Selectmen, it will be considered a negative action, and this cannot be reconsidered for two years.
Also, I have one quick question.
Is that accurate?
In the beginning, did you say that nobody can call for a revote after one hour of us voting? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, you are correct.
So nobody can bring this up to vote after 10 o'clock tonight? Is that right?
Well, on the original, so the motion that was denied was 27 to reconsider, so I assume you mean that.
Right, so they can't bring up 27, they have an hour.
I don't know the exact time, but the clerk has a timestamp.
What time was it?
What time was it?
9:11.
9:11, so 10:11 is dead. Nobody can bring it back.
No, you have to wait an hour. You have to wait an hour to reconsider, yes.
So he can go on until this is adjourned?
Name and address for the record, please.
Erica Carroll, 140 Old Pasture Road. I totally appreciate that we want to kick the can, we don't want to deal with this anymore, but it's not going away. And given what happened in Milton, I'm pretty sure the Attorney General really wants to make an example of someone. Do we want to be that town that is made an example of? Our budget is already in deficit! Our budget is already in deficit! We are going to lose a ton of grant money. Is that really the example we're setting for our kids, that we don't give a shit, pardon my French, about our community so much, that over a petty thing like this, we're going to kick the can for two years! Two years of being made an example of! Thank you.
All discussion must be made from the microphone, please. There are children present, let's be good examples.
Hello, my name is Sean Kirby, I live at 120 Melwood Ave. I would like an explanation. If we vote... if it's voted to go back to the Board of Selectmen, is that to start the process of looking at another zoning plan? So that we can then look at ways that we can work to keep the process going as long as possible? Because this has not been very well clarified by the state. There are going to be a lot more actions from a lot more towns to come up to say, hey, you got to pay if you want us to play. Because right now, that is in limbo. So if it goes back to the Selectmen, does that mean that the process starts over again to look at a different zoning plan?
Would you yield to Selectman Taylor?
Yes.
Without objection, Selectman Taylor.
What that allows is the Selectmen to look at not only other zones, but also to look into exemptions and to look into any other filings. If it's a no vote, the Selectmen can take no action. A yes vote to the Selectmen lets us look at all possible options until we can see what the outcome would be.
So, so to clarify, sir. If we vote no, it is a dead plan and there is no action forward to change the zoning. If we vote yes, it means that the process starts over from the Board of Selectmen onto the full zoning board and other... other related... other related boards. Is that correct?
I would... I would say yes, but Selectman Taylor?
That would be correct. That would start it back over so the Selectmen can look at all possibilities, including exemptions.
So that means that legal action could go forward to attempt to get an exemption or money from the state to help to subsidize this zoning plan, which puts the burden on this town. Is that correct?
That sounds correct to me.
So voting yes means that we are able to get involved and to make sure this process is not just, we say no, and now nothing else happens, and we're at the mercy of the state? Because then the state can come in and say, we're doing your zoning plan. Is that correct? Would that be something that could happen?
I... I don't believe that they can come in and say they're doing the zoning plan, but I would fully expect a lawsuit brought upon the town by the Attorney's General, which will force a subsequent town meeting.
So that means that if we don't do that, we can go forward with an exemption and work with the legal counsel of this town to force and pay for an exemption?
It means the Selectmen could look at all possibilities to move forward, that's what it means.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Sir? Name and address for the record, please.
John Jackson, 25 Arnhem Ave. I guess I had a question as far as the fiscal part of this goes. I mean, a lot of people are questioning where the money's coming from, what potential we have, like what we're going to lose. Is there any known documentation that states, you know, what potential losses we have losing these grants versus what we're going to lose and having to invest taxpayer dollars into the infrastructure for these developments?
Would you yield to Assistant Town Manager?
Absolutely.
So that information would be within the slides in the presentation for Article 28. At this point, the grants in recent years are just over a million dollars. The anticipated grants that have been identified that would likely be lost in the coming years, I believe, is closer to $3 million. And the state, at this point, has still reserved the right to increase those amounts or change kind of the ground rules.
So on the reverse side of that, though, as far as the infrastructure that the taxpayers would have to foot the bill for, I mean, I know fire trucks alone are probably a couple million bucks for all of that. Has that been looked into in order to be able to compare, you know, what we're going to lose from them versus what's going to have to come out of our taxes?
Again, without the ability to present all of the information I have, I'm somewhat at a disadvantage. At this point, the areas that were selected were chosen intentionally because there are not significant infrastructure, roadway, sewer, water needs. We don't... I don't think... the Board doesn't think that there will be significant cost increases to the town, but because this is a article to create zoning capacity and change the zoning rules rather than to actually develop anything, it's very difficult to look at that with any accuracy.
Would you yield to Selectman Taylor?
Just a point of order, I appreciate the question, John. But that... your question would be a question that would be referred to the Selectmen if this article, if this motion to go back passes. It's... it's a debate on the article that was already voted down at this point. Alright.
Don't go too far. All set, sir? Thank you. Sir, name and address for the record.
George Bog, 45 Dean Ave. Mr. Moderator, I have a question for Town Council through you.
Sir, go ahead.
If we vote no on referring this to the Selectmen, does anything preclude the Selectmen from on their own taking up new zones or pursuing an exemption?
Yes, so the Select... the Selectmen Planning Board, someone could in some way bring it up. But what this motion is, is a mandate to send it back to the Board of Selectmen, but it doesn't preclude anyone from doing something, somewhere, somehow.
Then I would like to speak on the motion?
Please.
Drive a stake through this thing's heart and vote no.
Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Mark Danyon, 194 Brigham Avenue in Drakeitt, Mass. 01826. I don't know how much input people get from other towns, but these grants that they like to hang over our heads are any of them guaranteed? Town of Manchester, they complied. They were declined. Every one of their grants, except for one, and that one's iffy. So please, do not let them use that hanging grant over our head. What I think we should do, delay. Delay, 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 and then hopefully, next year election, we can vote some of these people out that are from the state that are over here. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, George Belairis, 150 Sari Lane. Just want to understand something, because Section 18 of the bylaws says, "No vote shall be reconsidered, except upon notice of motion for that purpose given publicly in the meeting within one hour after such vote has been passed." So it's my understanding that within the next hour, somebody could make a motion to reconsider.
Town Council? That is correct.
Thank you.
Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Brian Daniel, 61 Donahue Road.
Can you speak into the microphone, sir?
Yes. My problem, and what a lot of people here have to understand, is that the town had six months to come forward with a projection of what compliance with this MBTA's act would cost the town. They could easily model out how much it would cost us in extra schools, you know, extra enrollment schools, firefighting, police, sewer, water. I mean, we have a water ban, like, every summer, and you're going to increase all these people in the town? Yet they didn't do that. So there's only two possibilities. Someone said that there's a third. That either you're trying to hide something, or you're incompetent. But both could be true, as someone pointed out to me. So I just want everybody to realize that, that the cost of complying with this could be greater, and probably will be greater, than the grants that we receive.
Sir? Name and address for the record, please.
Eric Lennon, 43 Donahue Road. In regards to one of the other residents who pointed out that if we voted yes to send this back to you guys, you could come up with a plan, you'll take all sorts of considerations. We've already seen that some of our considerations have been ignored, so I think we shouldn't send it back to you guys, because it seems like either way, you're going to decide what you want to do and disregard our vote. I'd also like to thank the moderator for reminding people here tonight that back in the Revolutionary War, people did sacrifice their lives, their livelihood, on a principle that they were told back then, you will do what the king said, you will comply, because that's what you're told to do. Your representation, it didn't count, and they decided, we don't want what you're selling. So now, whether the state is going to hold funds, withhold funds, sue us, do all that stuff, you still have that choice to decide, to tell them, we don't care, keep your money, let us govern ourselves, where we want to live, how we want to live. Just because they can hold it over your head, doesn't mean you let them. They didn't let them back then, don't let them do it now.
Mrs. Young?
Renee Young, I make motion to move the question.
A motion has been made and seconded. This will be a... this cannot be debated. So, Ms. Young? Mrs. Young? Could you write the motion? We do like you. Alright, to clarify... To clarify, a motion has been made and seconded by Mrs. Young to move the question. And so this is only... the vote we're going to take now is only to end debate. Yes? So, if you want to end... I don't think this gentleman wants to end debate, but if you want... if you want to end debate, please vote yes. If you wish to keep debating, please vote no. So please wait a moment for Madison. Can we give a round of applause to Madison for the amazing work that she's doing tonight? That is not an easy job, what she's doing over there. She helped you with all the clickers, and she's earning her paycheck tonight. Thank you, Madison. So once again, to reiterate, we are going to take a vote to move the question. If you want to end debate, you vote yes. If you do not want to end debate, vote no. Voting is now open. The motion counts. We will now mo... Sorry. Be in recess for one second. I'm going to move the question. Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any one in the other... so, motion has been made, debate has ended, we are now going to vote on the... on the original motion. So let's recap. The original motion, which was made by the Assistant Town Manager, was to refer Article 28 back to the Board of Selectmen. If you vote yes, you want this article to go back to the Board of Selectmen. If you vote no, you do not want it to go back to the Board of Selectmen. Point of... point of order, Mr. Cowan? Please speak to the microphone.
You just stated that this would go back to the Board of Selectmen. Did this not come from the Board of Selectmen? Is that the case? Did this come from the Board of Selectmen?
Well, the warrant article and the motion was made by the Assistant Town Manager.
Right, so we're not sending it back to the Selectmen because it didn't come from the Selectmen. We're sending it to a different body that's independent of the people who put it on the agenda in the first place.
Thank you for that clarification. So, just one more time. If you vote yes, we're... the motion reads... I'll read the motion as submitted by the Assistant Town Manager. Refer Article number 28, the MBTA Communities Overlay District, MBTA, back... it said back is probably to the Board... to the Board of Selectmen. Should we amend the amendment? amend the motion? Mr. Cowan? Okay, okay. So, we will... if... if we're going to vote yes to refer back, no, not to. When you're ready, voting's open. The motion... The motion is denied. Okay. We will now revert back to the beginning. Article one, Town Manager. The Town Manager is recovering from surgery. Give her a second. Oh, point of order, Mr. Cowan, or...
Parliamentally incorrect. You just put something up saying that the town... that Allison Minugian had put that... put the motion to send it back to Selectmen. Allison Minugian is not a resident of Drakeitt, she's not entitled to make a motion. So I just want to make a point of order that that was an improper... The way it was put on the screen was not correct.
There was a motion... The Town Manager.
No, it is... nope, that isn't... okay.
No, no!
What do you want me to go here? Okay.
Alright, Article one, Town Manager.
Article one. Good evening, I'm Kate Hodges, I'm the Town Manager. Article one is to move the town vote to waive the reading of town meeting articles as printed in the warrant. As is customary for town meetings throughout the Commonwealth, a vote can be taken by town meeting to waive the requirement to read the entirety of each warrant article. Affirmative action here permits the moderator to reference the articles to be voted upon by their numbers, titles, and subject matters, thus making a more efficient use of town meetings to town.
Motion has been made, is there a second? This will be by electronic vote. If you are in favor of the motion, vote aye. If you are opposed to the motion, vote no. Voting is now open. Okay, hold on, hold on, okay. Okay, hold on, hold on, okay. Let's refer, hold on. Madison, they're saying their clickers are not working, I wonder if we could take a recess to, look, take a recess. There might have just been a delay in pressing the buttons and whatnot, so we're gonna do a test vote, just to make sure everyone's is working. So the test vote is, is this your first time attending town, this is just a test vote, to make sure the clickers are working. So it doesn't matter what you're gonna say. So, vote, when I tell you, go. Okay, in the interim, in the interest of time, a lot of these first couple of motions are pretty perfunctory, so without objection, we will do voice vote on some of these, is that okay? Without objection, okay. All those in favor, well, it's not really, it's the moderator's discretion, so we'll see what the voice vote is. So, we have, we, she has a headset, and there's someone in the, in the other room that can relay the information. Okay, thank you. Are they okay with that in the other room?
Oh no, don't, don't touch it, it's glass. Sorry, I'm such a bum. Do we have like a-
Are they all set? All right. All right. Oh, now it's working?
Yeah, they're okay.
Okay, keep on clicking, keep on clicking, this is just a practice vote.
So that's on me, that's on me. I, I do, I do.
All right. So we are gonna, she has resolved the issue, but there's a slight delay because of a lot of people with technical internet usage and the bandwidth and so forth. So we will vote on Article One again electronically. So give her a second to go back to Article One. Ignore this, this is just a practice thing.
Could I make a motion to turn the lights up a little bit? In the back, it's very hard to see.
I asked the same question, sir, I guess this is as high as it goes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded to vote on Article One. All those in favor, please vote with the green button, opposed, vote with the red button. The motion passes. Article Two, Town Manager.
Article Two is the reading of reports and move that the town vote to hear the report of the town accountant, Board of Selectmen, and any other committee having direction from previous town meetings. Affirmative action on this article will allow any town group, committee, or board who wishes to make a report to the public body be allowed to do so, either in writing or via address to the Assembly. At this time, the only report in front of this body is the FY25 budget book, which is available on the town's website and in limited print form, and the Finance Committee report, which was on the table at registration.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Hearing and seeing none. If you are in favor of this motion, please vote green. If you are opposed to this motion, please vote red. Voting is closed. The motion carries. Article Three, Town Manager.
Article Three is a compensating balance agreement, and there is a typo because we're looking for it to be July 1st, 2025. So, move that the town vote to authorize the Treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements during the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, as permitted by General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53F. In Massachusetts, a treasurer-collector of any city or town is authorized to enter into written agreements for periods not to exceed three years with banking institutions which hold municipal funds. The agreements made between the town and the bank specify the terms under which the treasurer-collector collects the taxes and under, and deposits them in various accounts, including interest-bearing accounts throughout the fiscal year. Affirmative action on this article ratifies the town's banking agreements, allowing us to maintain our various accounts and deposit and expend funds to run the business of the town government and schools.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of this motion will vote with the green button, all those opposed to this motion will vote with the red button. The vote is closed and the motion is agreed to. For Article Four, the moderator will, I recuse myself for deliberation of this article, the town clerk will take the chair.
Article number four, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elective officers of the town as provided in General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, to be effective July 1st, 2025, and to raise and appropriate such sums of money under the various town departments as follows. Moderator, $550. Board of Selectmen, $2,000. School Committee, $2,000. Submitted by Kate Hodges, Town Manager. Board of Selectmen recommends approval. Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
Hi, Rebecca Duda, 100 East Sixth Street, and I'd like to make an amendment to set the school committee stipends to zero. I think the amendment speaks for itself.
Do you have the, an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so while Maddie's putting that into the program, is there a second to the amendment? Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, sir.
Truly a noble gesture to ask a-
Your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pete Clark, 14 Arbor Drive. As I was saying, it's a noble gesture for an elected official to volunteer, to give up a measly stipend of two grand for the hours that they put in, the events that they attend, the tickets that they buy, and so forth. I think altogether, what is the amount, to about 20 grand or something like that? With all respect to penny pinching, I think that it sounds good, but it really lacks teeth that mean anything. I'm gonna suggest that we vote against this amendment.
Any further discussion? Maddie, are you all set? So we're voting on the amendment for the school committee to be zero. The vote is now closed. This requires a majority vote. The amendment fails. We're going to be voting on the original article, Article number four. Again, it's $550 for the moderator, $2,000 for the Board of Selectmen, and $2,000 for the school committee. Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote on Article number four. The vote is closed, and the vote passes by majority.
The moderator reassumes the chair. Article Five, there are two motions in Article Five. Town Manager, motion A.
Motion A is to move for the town to transfer the sum of $118,613, specifically $32,000 from the Technology Stabilization Fund, and $86,613 from the Town Hall Stabilization Fund, to be used by the Board of Assessors to help reduce the tax levy for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, and to offset the cost of technology into Town Hall debt payment. This article asks for acceptance of the town's general fund appropriation for the fiscal year, which begins July 1st, 2025. As the moderator said, this year, we have to take it in two motions, because transfers from stabilization accounts require two-thirds majority, while budget appropriations require a simple majority.
A motion has been made on motion A, is there a second? On discussion?
Well, Mr. Moderator, may I make the full presentation, and then we can go back to motions A and B at the end?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Motion B, which we will take at the end. The second motion takes care of the remainder of the budget appropriation, including the transfers from various revolving accounts. This, as I said, requires a simple majority. The principal amounts in the budget include the total seating here for general government, including costs associated with the operation of all departments housed in the Town Hall, the townwide legal services budget, and the cost for property insurance for the town and school buildings and vehicles. Public safety line item includes police, fire, public safety dispatch, building inspections, animal control, and emergency management. Public works includes highway, tree, solid waste, engineering, stormwater, and fleet management. Education refers to the Drake at Public Schools and the town's assessment for Lowell Tech and Essex Aggie. Health and Human Services includes the operations within the Board of Health, the Council on Aging, Social Services, and the Veterans Benefits. Culture and Recreation covers the library, recreation, parks and open space, and a small amount for the Historical Commission. The last item, Debt Insurance and Other, is made up of approximately $3.5 million in debt payments, and $24.8 million in insurance contributions for all town and school employees, plus the town's retirees. It's a little under $1 million in reserves funds that are necessary for unexpected fees, bills, and employee retirement payouts. This budget is outlined in the warrant, includes a transfer of $1,465,213 from various revolving and enterprise accounts, which has been used to offset the costs that would normally be borne through the general fund. These transfers include and are not limited to funds that are offset equipment upgrades and capital improvements within the town's enterprises, costs for cemetery business, which are covered by the sale of cemetery lots, and the conservation and school mail-related efforts. In terms of expenses, this slide depicts our main budget area and changes therein. There are several line items in FY26 that are completely out of the town's control, including large increases in insurance premiums, alternative public school assessments, and the town's regional dispatch shared services with Tewksbury. General government includes administration, planning, land management, building, conservation, and finance, is going up by a modest 1.16%. This is principally due to a 30% increase in property and vehicle insurance, which has been offset by not filling more than 25 town positions, which are either currently vacant or will become vacant upon the retirement of several officials in FY26. These include a payroll clerk, an assistant treasurer-collector, a part-time collections clerk for the library, and other administrative positions, an assistant town planner, a conservation and recreation clerk, a planning engineer, and a facilities manager and custodians. Public safety's increase is similarly minimal, despite the large increase in our regional dispatch assessment, which equals more than 27% from last year to this. This is because the town is no longer receiving the state rem, the state grant programming for E-911. That was a phase-out program, and we're at the end of our line for that. This, like the town's general government line items, is offset by several police officer positions which will be vacant due to retirements or because officers are leaving Drake to take positions in other law enforcement agencies. Public work shows an increase simply because several of the standalone departments, including engineering and facilities, were downsized and moved under DPW's umbrella. As an example, for a number of years, the police vehicles were being serviced outside of town, tied up at least one part-time employee to transfer the vehicles for service for a fair number of hours, DPW will now be taking on those maintenance tasks. Additionally, despite the increase, DPW is down the greatest number of employees of all town departments, and this year's budgets will keep the positions of assistant DPW director, administrative assistant for engineering and stormwater, three general foremen, six equipment operators, and three laborers vacant. Culture and Recreation has decreased due to substantial funds being cut from park maintenance and outdoor facility management and programming. Health and Human Services has increased due to contractual union obligations and the increased cost with running a senior center ride program in vain. increased cost with running a senior center ride program in vans. The COA will also be down one part-time social worker and several part-time van drivers. These will not be filled this year either. Health insurance has increased by an unprecedented rate of nearly twenty percent from last year, a cost of more than three million dollars. Increases in school populations at both Lowell Tech and our area charter schools are also on the rise, with the town increases of more than a half a million due to those relative assessments. The total amount needed to run the business of the town, including the general fund and the educational needs of the Drakit Public, Lowell Tech, and various charter schools, can be seen here. On the municipal side, the increase from last year is next to three point six five million dollars, which increases equal about two point five million dollars attributed almost entirely to employee and health insurance premiums. Add to that approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars to cover increases in other types of insurances for vehicles and properties, and six hundred and fifty dollars added to the town's retirement contributions for next year. We have what seems to be a perfect storm of increases with no corresponding means to cover them. And again, all of these areas are outside of the town's control. Together, these increases total nearly one hundred and ten percent of the increase from last year to next. This is why, to ensure that we can cover these expenses within the confines of Proposition Two and a Half, we have to leave many of the town's already open positions still open, and transfer money from stabilization and free cash to achieve balance. On the school side, the increase is about four point three million dollars. Nearly half of that is attributed to increases in health insurance and retirement assessments similar to the town. Please remember that the schools are obligated to meet the minimum school spending. Even as this budget sits, these increases ensure maybe about one hundred and two percent. That's two to three percent, almost exclusively due to large increases in staff insurance, which although they do count towards the net school spending, they're absolutely not the result of added staff, additional programming, or greater extracurricular offerings. To say that we exceed net school spending from this year is pretty misleading, because what really put us over the head was insurance and retiree-driven. This will also be the third year that the school is level-funded and level-staffed. And as enrollment in the schools outside of Drakit increases, so does the assessments in the town, and we need to account for nearly a quarter of a million dollars lost last year. This year's budget does not include an appropriation for trash in the same manner as years past. To go a little more in detail about it, I want to be clear that this came about because there's simply no other way around it. We have no other means to pay a four point one million dollar bill. Legally speaking, trash or solid waste management is considered a utility like water and sewer. The town, through its budget, is offering to continue providing trash services and manage a townwide trash contract because it affords the lowest cost for residential trash hauling, we believe, for our residents. We have done a considerable amount of homework on this. We could not find a private residential hauling service similar to what Drakit needs, ten thousand six hundred and seventy-eight households, plus school and parks, offered at a price point that was lower than ninety-five dollars per quarter. For reference, Newton, New Hampshire charges a hundred and five a quarter. Pelham charges a hundred and two fifty to a hundred and sixty-eight per quarter, depending on what you have. Groton is two hundred and forty a quarter. Acton is three thirty to four oh five a quarter. Pembroke is a hundred a quarter. None of those are Drakit. I get it, we just couldn't find another one that was under ninety-five. Drakit, seen here inside the red circle, is surrounded by many communities that have had to make this choice. As Town Manager, I have a responsibility to be upfront with all of you about our situation, and moreover, to present a balanced budget in a responsible means that achieves that. Let me be clear about a few things. The charter dictates that the Town Manager sets the fees. It is a responsibility of mine. That said, I brought this to the Select Board and the Finance Committee so we could discuss it openly from the beginning. Both approved the budget. The Selectman voted again to recommend the budget just last month after the election. Under no circumstances can we afford to pay for trash with tax dollars, and if it's not collected by us, then residents will have to contract with their own providers for service, and it is likely that it's going to be more than the town's fees. There will be a senior abatement program for those who cannot afford the fees, and it is administered in the exact same way as the CPC abatements. There is no scenario that responsibly allows Drakit to cover trash fees. No means to cover a four point two million dollar bill that doesn't do more harm to the town, and I'd be lying if I said that there was, and more importantly, I would be hurting Drakit. Doing this is hard. It is uncomfortable for me, and I know it makes me wildly unpopular. And I'm new, and that isn't great. I'm happy to be here. I hate that I have to take away something that you all have had for so many years, but it is my job, and it is my job to tell you the honest-to-God truth that there is no other way around this. It might be easier to find another way around it, but it isn't what's best for Drakit. So I ask for your affirmative action on Article five, but the choice is yours. The Select Board and the Finance Committee both endorse this article. The first motion is, again, a two-thirds majority, and only goes for one hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars from the various stabilization funds. That motion is move for the town to transfer the sum of one hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars, specifically thirty-two thousand from the Technology Stabilization Fund, and eighty-six thousand six hundred and thirteen from the Town Hall Stabilization Fund, to be used by the Board of Assessors to reduce the tax levy for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2026, to offset the cost of technology and Town Hall's debt payment.
Motion has been made, and I believe, is there a second? Second, on discussion. Hearing and seeing none, we will vote on, this is only on motion A, right? To transfer one eighteen six thirteen. This requires a two-thirds vote. If you are in favor of motion A, you will vote on the green button. If you are opposed to motion A, you'll vote with the red button. Voting on motion A is now open. Voting is now closed, and motion carries. Motion B, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of one hundred thirty-two million one hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Motion has been made and has been seconded, on discussion. Hearing and seeing no discussion on motion B, we will go ahead and vote on motion B. If you are in favor of the motion, please press the green button. If you are opposed to the motion, please press the red button. Voting is now open. The motion carries. Is there a point of order?
Yes, point of order to proceed to Article twenty-three and then return to the original sequence.
A motion has been made to take Article twenty-three out of order. Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? Oh. Yes, I said that, right? Oh, the motion carries. Yep. So a motion has been made to move to Article twenty-three. There has been seconded. Is there any discussion? So this is, this is just to debate on whether to move to Article twenty-three. We're just debating whether to move, to take Article twenty-three out of order. Wait a second for Madison to put the vote in. Are we all set, Madison? Please do. Majority, yep. All right, so we're going to vote on the motion. If you wish to take Article twenty-three out of order, please vote with the green button. If you do not wish to vote to take it out of order, vote with the red button. Voting is now open. The motion carries. We will now consider Article twenty-three. The Assistant Town Manager.
I will read the motion. There is a slide coming, but I move to amend Section three point four point one, paragraph A four, within three point four point one, accessory uses permitted of the Drakit zoning bylaw, adding the word "not" as highlighted below, to read, "The keeping of not more than one small animal per four thousand square feet of lot area upon which said animals are kept, or not more than one large animal in excess of four hundred pounds per ten thousand square feet of lot area upon which they are kept, excepting domestic dogs and cats, which are not regulated herein."
Is there a second? Second, on discussion.
So effectively, this is a correction of a Scrivener's error. We're not really clear what happened to the word "not" when this was put in place several years ago. Currently, there is no ability for the Building Department to enforce when someone has too many animals or is unable to take care of the animals they have. So we are proposing to add this word so that there is some ability to enforce an upper limit on animals. None of that would preclude a new proposal coming, a new proposal coming forward to a future town meeting to further refine or amend this.
On discussion.
My name is Emily Macras, nineteen Roswell Ave. I live here in Drakit. I have a garden and a small backyard flock. I've been so grateful to have these things as the price of food continues to increase. We've all seen the price of eggs skyrocket when they were even stocked on the shelves at all. Tonight, I'm here to ask you all to vote no on the proposed law that would limit the number of small animals residents can have. The way the law is currently written, it would restrict the number of animals to an unreasonably low amount. Based on the average lot size here in Drakit, which is just under a half an acre, this would mean that households would only be allowed to have three to four chickens. This isn't even really enough chickens to have to make it through a winter, as chickens rely on each other's body heat to huddle together to make it through our cold New England winters. My small backyard flock provides me and my community not only eggs, but are also a source of so much joy for me, so many of my neighbors, friends, family, and an incredible teaching opportunity for kids to see where food comes from. They are also my pets. Beyonce, besides laying fabulous blue-shelled eggs with deep orange yolks, loves to come and sit on my lap to take a nap. We have seen the effects that industrialized food systems have on our food supply. Avian flu outbreaks have devastated commercial poultry operations, resulting in rising costs and shortages. This year, my local feed store ordered the most baby chicks for customers than any year prior, even more than during COVID. Because of breakdowns in shipping, almost seventy percent of those baby chicks died. It has shown how fragile supply chains can be, especially when they are in faraway places. Keeping food local and backyard farming accessible is imperative to protect our community's ability to support each other and literally put food on our tables. Drakit is a right-to-farm community. Its protection of small farmers is quite literally the reason I bought land here. It ensures our right to grow and raise healthy, local food, especially in a time fraught with uncertainty, raising food prices and shortages. This is a freedom we should not take away. Restricting the number of chickens we can have doesn't solve any of the problems that I know have brought about this amendment, but it would create new ones. It makes us more dependent on the broken industrial food systems that are vulnerable to disease, inflation, and disruption. It weakens our community's food security and strips us of one of the tools that we have to be more self-reliant. We should not take away the right we have to feed our families and communities. Vote no on the small animal restriction law. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Christie Briscoe, two seventy-four Nashua Road. I oppose the Article twenty-three amendment for four primary purposes: conflict with agricultural traditions and local character. Drakit has a longstanding tradition of agriculture, farming, animal husbandry, and has been a right-to-farm community since Massachusetts created the bylaw in nineteen seventy, though it has a strong farming history that goes back hundreds of years. This amendment to the existing bylaw shifts the town away from its rural character toward unnecessary agricultural restriction. It may discourage local food production, sustainability practices, and youth agricultural programs that are central to our community's values. Overregulation of responsible animal owners. This amendment imposes arbitrary limitations that do not account for responsible care, stewardship, or existing conditions for small farms. Many residents, especially those with small farms under five acres, four-H participants, or families with therapeutic or hobby animals, already maintain healthy, humane environments for more than one animal per four thousand square feet. Regulating by square footage rather than care standards punishes responsible owners and ignores the realities of modern suburban homesteading. Enforcement challenges and ambiguity. The town may face significant administrative burdens in trying to monitor and enforce this policy. It would require regulatory property inspections, though I do know those are done today by animal control, as we do have them at our property. Consistent weighing or categorization of animals, because it goes on to say that you cannot have an animal greater than four hundred pounds unless you have ten thousand acres. This could strain local resources, lead to inconsistent application of the law, and place unnecessary pressure on municipal staff within a town that already does not have enough funding, who may not have the expertise or bandwidth to make nuanced determinations about animal welfare or property use. These enforcement complications could ultimately create more friction and bureaucracy than benefit. Unintended impact on equity and inclusion. Restrictive animal bylaws disproportionately affect lower-income families who may rely on backyard livestock for food, companionship, or cultural practices. This proposal may inadvertently exclude residents who use their land to support food security or community resilience in creative, responsible ways. There are more balanced alternatives, such as noise or sanitation-based ordinances, that address real nuisance concerns without overstepping into private land use and responsible homesteading. I urge the town to reject Article twenty-three and seek more thoughtful, community-informed solutions, some of which could include noise and sanitation ordinances, animal welfare inspections by request, special permitting for higher animal counts, community education and outreach, pilot program with annual review. By adopting more flexible, fair, and enforceable approaches, the town can support both community welfare and individual property rights. My husband and I chose to continue the family tradition here in Drakit back in two thousand and one by purchasing the family property, which we would not have done if the right-to-farm did not exist in this community. We'd like to continue and raise our children here with that same right and that same obligation to give back to the land, and this requirement does not fit with that purpose. and this requirement does not fit with that purpose. Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Farrier, 35 Reddick Road, Drakett. I also am speaking against this article. I think it's just poorly written. It was poorly written and continues to be. It doesn't give a definition of small animals. I have a quarter-acre lot, been here 40 years. In the way I read this, I can't have three goldfish. I have 2.7... I have 2.7 of them, but I can't have a duck, a frog, and a whatever. I just... I don't see how it's enforceable. I think it's an overreach. I know the right to farm is five acres or more, so my quarter-acre lot will never reach that. So I just don't see how this can be enforced. If we are a right-to-farm community, I understand that's, you know, for business, but as a homeowner, I would like to have, you know, four, five, six, seven, eight chickens on my quarter-acre lot. That's not too many, in my opinion. I don't have any. I don't have any pets at the moment, but if I want an aquarium, this law would prevent it.
Madam?
Maureen Graham, 25... 24 Varnum Ave.
Speak a little clearer, thank you.
Maureen Graham, 24 Varnum Ave. I'm asking people to vote no for this. I understand the reason for it, but there's also limits when you go to purchase chicks. You have to buy four or six. Once you purchase that many babies, they only lay eggs for so many years. That limits families for getting more later. Once those chickens age out, what do those families do with those chickens? Now we have chickens that are gonna be either tossed aside and thrown away or returned to the MSPCA. We're just gonna limit them to, like, have roosters and continue farming. So my concern is just the welfare of the animals, and it should not be limited. Animal control has to do yearly barn inspections, so when they go, if they see a problem, then they're gonna address it. I think that we should leave the law as it sits. Thank you.
Sir?
John Jackson, 25 Varnum Ave. I'm also speaking against this, and I had a question. With the change in the rules or laws as it's written, what would be the recourse of that for people who already have, say, 11 birds on a one-acre lot where that would only allow you to have 10 chickens? What happens then?
Would you yield to Assistant Town Manager?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would request that Town Council answer that.
Town Council states you would be grandfathered.
I don't wanna open too much of a can of worms or go down a rabbit hole, but again, the way that it's written, it's so ambiguous. How are we to ascertain or would there be record-keeping as to individual birds of the flock when they were added, anything like that? And again, 10 birds on one acre, that is, you know, tiny in the grand scheme of things for people who keep birds, and it's really an unreasonable amount for what we're looking at. So again, I urge everyone to vote no.
Sir?
Josh Gillis, 12 Dunn Street. I have been here only 20 years, and the town that I used to live in used to be a farm town. And stuff started like this started coming in, and eventually now it's no longer a farm town. One of the reasons why I came here is for that reason, is to get my own vegetables, have my chickens, and get my own eggs. To Lydia's point that said earlier, I have an old chicken, and I take care of her very well. She's my Easter egg. She's one of my first ones. She doesn't produce any more eggs, but I treat her just the same as the rest of them. I take care of her, I make sure she's healthy, and I feed her, and I make sure she's watered. I take care of her very well. If she's not producing any eggs, she's no good to me. So if you stop putting limitations on chickens like that, what am I gonna do with that chicken? I'm either gonna get rid of it or harvest it, or whatever, but that chicken's not gonna have a good life. So I'm totally against this. I think it's bad. The other towns before us where I came from, they're no longer farm towns. People moved in, tried to change that, and they're fighting the farms. I love this town for what it is, and I hope it stays that way. Thank you.
Brooke Bryan Daniel, 61 Donahue Road. I was at the planning board meeting where this was originally discussed. This bill came about because there was a person that had 200 chickens on a quarter-acre lot. I've had chickens before. I understand that that's a bit unreasonable. How we got to the number of 10 per acre, which is ridiculously small, and not even chickens? Like Lance said, if you have goldfish, you can be in excess of this. Now, the fact that this was crafted to address the problem with this man with 200 chickens, and the town attorney just said that this person with 200 chickens is gonna be grandfathered anyway, so what's the purpose of this? It's not gonna solve anything. It's ridiculous. Once again, I'm leaning towards incompetency.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none. If you are in favor of this motion, you will vote with the green. If you are opposed to this motion, you would vote with the red. This does require a two-thirds majority. The Board of Selectmen recommended approval, as did the planning board. Voting is now open. The motion is defeated. We will now return to Article 6. The Town Manager.
Mr. Moderator, do you want me to read?
The Town Manager has the floor.
Okay. Article 6 is to transfer of free cash.
We already voted on five. That was the trash. We voted on Article 5 before we moved to Article 23.
Yep. Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,833,571 to be used by the Board of Assessors to reduce the tax levy for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, as discussed two articles ago, in order to achieve balance. One, there was the addition of a trash fee, which will come in as revenue and come out as a corresponding charge in a revolving account, which probably next time we come around, we'll come to town meeting and establish an actual enterprise account for that. And then this transfer of free cash. We had started at $4.1 million. We were able to cut it down. There's very little chance we'll get this any lower than this is. And so we are asking that the article... that town meeting authorize the transfer.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. This will be a majority vote. Board of Selectmen recommend approval, as do the Finance Committee. If you are in favor of the motion, vote green. If you are opposed to the motion, vote red. Voting is now open. The motion carries. Article 7, the Town Manager.
Article 7 is to appropriate fiscal year 26's enterprise fund budgets. I move that the town vote to appropriate the following sums of money to operate the Kenwood Water District Sewer Department... Drakett Sewer Department and the Stormwater Division in the Department of Public Works during fiscal year 2026 under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F 1/2. Said sums to be funded from Kenwood Water receipts, except that $464,576 shall be funded from retained earnings. Said sums to be funded from sewer receipts, except that $521,945 should be funded from retained earnings, and said sums to be raised by the tax levy for stormwater. In Massachusetts, enterprise fund appropriations are managed by the local legislative body. In Drakett, of course, that is town meeting. Enterprise funds are established as a means to account for services where a fee is charged. They have a separate accounting and financial reporting systems that are separate and distinct from the general fund. The appropriation sought here to cover the direct operation of running these accounts. For Kenwood Water and Drakett Sewer, which are completely separate from the general fund, the appropriation sought will cover the cost of all personnel wages, benefits, retirement contributions, as well as supplies and services which the departments need throughout the year to conduct their business. These are 100% paid from customer fees and services and have no impact on the general fund, the tax levy, and the capital budget supported by the general fund. For stormwater, charges collected from builders and developer are collected and deposited into this fund. At this time, Drakett does not have a formalized resident stormwater fee, nor do we have any true stormwater enterprise. The funds sought for appropriation in FY26 are meant to defray the cost of the improvements and some personnel time required to complete state reporting, referred to as the MS1 requirement... MS4 requirement for the improvements to the current stormwater infrastructure and systems.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, we will vote on the motion. A green button is in favor of the motion. If you are opposed to the motion, you will vote with the red button. Voting is now open on the motion. The motion carries. Article 8, the Town Manager.
Article 8 is to authorize expenditures from PEG Access and Cable-related Fund. PEG Television, which stands for Public Education Government, covers the Community Television Network, commonly referred to as Drakett TV, who provide excellent public, educational, and governmental programming for our community. The PEG channel system was established in the United States a result of the Cable Communications Policy Act of 1984. PEG channels are funded through franchise fees charged to cable providers for operating a community. In Drakett, Comcast provides a franchise fee equal to 4% of the gross annual cable revenues received from Drakett residents and businesses. Drakett TV channels typically broadcast local government meetings, school board meetings, and other community-produced programs. They also provide a means for local persons to create their own shows or animated media and offer classes and training programs to those who are interested in television media from young children all the way through adults. Drakett TV aims to promote community involvement, education, government transparency, and civic education. The amount requested for the appropriation here... I knew that was gonna happen. ...is to cover FY26's operation.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will vote electronically with the green button. All those opposed will vote no with the red button. Voting is open. Voting is now closed. The motion carries. Article 9, the Town Manager.
Article 9, appropriate transfer recreation revolving funds. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $45,000 from Drakett's Recreation Revolving Account receipts to fund expenses related to Recreation Department in FY26. Similar to enterprise accounts, revolving fund appropriations are governed in part by the local legislative body, for which Drakett is town meeting for Drakett. Revolving accounts are special funds, which are established as a means to collect money for services and programs that have a fee attached. However, unlike enterprise accounts, which must collect fees to pay for the entirety of the operation, revolving accounts exist as a means to supplement the operation. Fees for service, like youth sports registration and field uses for recreation, are used to run programs and line the fields. Town meeting is asked to authorize an amount of funds the department can spend up to. This article seeks to transfer $45,000 from the Recreation Revolving Account, again, fees by customers, into the general fund to supplement the recreation efforts to the town. This has no impacts on the tax levy.
Motion has been made. It's seconded. On discussion, sir? Did you say your name and address for the record?
David Butchkruck, Lemon Arthur Avenue in Drakett. The title says revolving to the general fund, but the underlying words say "related to the Recreation Department." Is this going to stay in the Recreation Department, or does it go to the general fund to the town for uses for other things?
Would you yield to the Town Manager?
Yes.
So the Recreation Account is part of the general fund? It's a line item? It would be used, just like any other line item, for recreation funds? For recreation programs and business?
Only for recreation, so...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? In the interest of time, is town meeting okay with us voting by voice?
Yes.
Okay. So on Article 9, we will vote by voice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're waiting for the overfloor room. What's that? Oh, they wanna stick. We have to take into consideration the overfloor room. One second. Is there enough room? Do we thank Town Clerk?
No.
Okay. Okay. So they don't want... One second. We have to be fair to everybody. I'm just gonna vote by clicker for just... And the assistant... All those in favor of this motion will vote by green button. All those opposed to this motion and Article 9 will vote with the red button. The voting is now open. The motion carries. Article 10, the Town Manager.
Article 10 is for unpaid bills. Move that the town raise to appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of $1,806 to pay for unpaid bills of the prior fiscal year, including those outlined herein. In Massachusetts, paying bills from a prior fiscal year requires a specific legislative authorization for municipalities. Payments for the specific fiscal year must be made during that year. Town meeting as a legislative body is required to pay any previous year's obligations and vote upon that. In any case, Encore Fire Protection has an outstanding payment in the amount of $1,806 for services rendered last fiscal year, meaning before July 1 of 2004. Affirmative action here will allow the town to pay the vendor Affirmative action here will allow the town to pay the vendor for the work they performed. This is a four-fifths majority vote.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
As the town manager stated, this requires a four-fifth vote. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will vote on the motion. If you are in favor of the motion, vote green. If you're opposed, vote red. Uh, the motion passes. Article eleven, Ms. Foster.
Article eleven, move that the town act on the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee on the FY twenty-six Community Preservation Budget and, persuasive to the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee, take the following actions. That the town reserve for appropriation the following amounts from estimated FY twenty-six receipts as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. One, one hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for the acquisition, preservation, rehab, and restoration of historic resources. Two, one hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehab and restoration of community housing acquired or created with CPA funds. Thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety dollars for administration expenses and all other necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee for FY twenty-six, and four hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and forty dollars appropriate for CPA debt services and related costs. This article requests town meeting to appropriate the Community Preservation Committee Budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This budget, as noted, includes thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety dollars to cover administrative expenses, including salaries and any appraisal, appraisals, or any administrative expense requested by the committee. Debt payments totaled four hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and forty dollars for the bonds issued for Harmony Hall and the fields at Veterans Park. In addition, the CPC is required to set aside for later spending ten percent of annual CPA revenues for each of the main three CPA purposes. Historic resources, open space, and community housing, unless funding a project or another related expense, such as debt payments in a given fiscal year. As a result, this budget does include the one hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars into the Historic Resources Reserve Fund and the Community Housing Reserve Fund. All unappropriated receipts fall to the undesignated fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. The CPC, Board of Selectmen, and Finance Committee unanimously recommend approval of Article eleven.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will vote by electronic moans. If you are in favor, you'll vote the green button. Opposed, the red button. Voting is closed. The motion passes. Article twelve, Ms. Foster.
Article twelve, I move that the town vote to rescind the unused borrowing authority voted under previous town meeting articles as follows. For a fire engine, voted at the twenty-twenty-two Annual Town Meeting, Article fourteen, one million three hundred and forty thousand. CPA one forty-four Greenmont Ave., twenty-fifteen Annual Town Meeting, Article twenty, three million. Solar panels, twenty-twenty-three Annual Town Meeting, Article forty, one point one million dollars. This article requests town meeting to rescind borrowing authorizations approved by town meeting in prior years. Instead of debt financing the fire engine, the town used the remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding, also known as ARPA, to fund the project. This was one-time revenue required to be appropriated by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. The town largely used this funding to fund the capital plan. Town meeting is also being asked to rescind the borrowing that was approved at the twenty-fifteen Annual Town Meeting for the one forty-four Greenmont Ave. Senior Housing Project. Due to project delays, the bond was never issued. Now that the project is underway, the developers have submitted invoices for reimbursement for which the town is contract, contractually obligated to pay. Instead of debt financing, we are requesting in Article thirteen to transfer three million from the Community Housing Reserve Fund for this project. Lastly, we are requesting that town meeting rescind the bond authorization for the solar panels approved at the twenty-twenty-three Annual Town Meeting. After numerous meetings and an in-depth cost analysis, it was determined that the project was not economically viable and not worth pursuing at this time. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee unanimously recommend approval of Article twelve.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of this motion will vote the green button. All those opposed to the motion will vote the red button. Voting is now closed. And the motion carries. Article thirteen, Ms. Foster.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Housing Reserve Fund within the town of Drakett's Community Preservation Fund, the sum of three million, to be used to supplement the Greenmont Senior Housing Project. This article requests the town meeting appropriate three million from the Community Housing Reserve Fund for the one forty-four Greenmont Ave. Senior Housing Project approved at the twenty-fifteen Town Meeting. This would be instead of issuing a bond, the town, the town is using available funds to meet this appropriation, saving the town from paying interest payments and other costs related to issuing a bond. The Community Housing Reserve Fund currently has a balance of three point five million as of July first, twenty-twenty-four. The CPC, Board of Selectmen, and Finance Committee unanimously recommend approval of Article thirteen.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will vote with the green button. All those opposed will vote with the red button. I, no, I asked for discussion. Oh, okay. We will have discussion? State your name and address for the record.
Michelle Boormeester, forty-five Paddock Lane. I just had a quick question. In the article itself, it said, um, three million or any other sum to be used to supplement one or more affordable housing projects within Drakett or take any other action relative thereto. Here it's saying just the Greenmont Senior Housing Project. What else is on the table with that?
Ms. Foster?
There's nothing. This is just strictly for this project. It doesn't say that, so how, how does that get specified?
Well, through the, if I may, through the motion, correct? The motion is the definite.
To specify it, please.
Excuse me?
I can come up.
The motion is.
So when we put out the warrant, the warrant doesn't always, it, it has the very general language to allow the motion to be honed and, and, and refined over the time. The motion that you come here has to have the sum, exactly the sum, where it's coming from, and what it's going to. And so what you have there is sort of a preview, if we don't have the exact amount at that time.
Okay, so this is definitely going toward that and only that?
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Sir?
Brian Daniel, sixty-one Downey Road. Uh, I remember when these funds were just gonna be used for open space preservation. We all know that, you know, open space is probably pretty good. Your response there makes me see that, and this is gonna exhaust most of the fund, that this was just looking for a way to plunder money out of the fund. Because you didn't have it in the warrant, saying that, you know, this was specifically for that project. You just left it open.
The procedures of how a warrant is done is that you make it very general until it's completed, so that we make sure that we have all of the authorities there.
I, I understand that.
Nobody did anything nefarious. No one is trying to pull the wool over your eyes.
I leave that up to the crowd here to decide whether, what you think about that.
I know the intent of the article.
Mr. Randy, other discussion? Not sure if. State your name for the record and the address.
Rich Cowan, twelve Green Lawn, a member of the Finance Committee. Just a point of information, in your town report, if you open up the treasurer's reports, there's a special revenue account, Fund Twenty-One, and it lists the fund balances of all the different areas of CPC. So all the areas of CPC are already segregated into different accounts. It's been set up so a certain percentage goes into the various four areas of CPC, and there's nothing to hide in that, so.
Sean Ash, Chairman of the Finance Committee. I just didn't respond, so I'm sorry, Brian. Uh, we are appointed by the town moderator to represent you. We don't report to the selectman or the manager. Our role is to oversee and dig in and look at all the numbers and make sure nothing is being hidden and nothing's being, no wool's pulled over anybody's eyes. And we've been working on this for a year. We knew what this issue was. We knew what the numbers were, and we can tell you that we weren't surprised by this and we approved it, I believe, a month ago, so.
Well, I wasn't sure if he was coming down. All right. If you are in favor of the motion, please vote with the green button. If you are opposed to the motion, please vote with the red button. Voting is closed. And the motion carries. Article fourteen, Ms. Foster.
Article fourteen, move that the town vote to appropriate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, six hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and twenty-five from the Open Space Reserve Balance, and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five from the undesignated fund balance, for open space purposes under the Community Preservation Program for the purchase of approximately forty-one acres, formerly known as the Brock's Wood Lot, Book zero eight four zero eight, page one fifty-five, located at forty-six, four hundred and sixty-one Methuen Road, as open space, including all related incidental costs to be spent under the direction of the town manager, and further to direct the Board of Selectmen to grant a permanent conservation restriction on said property, persuasive to MGL, Chapter forty-four B., Section twelve, and Chapter one eighty-four, Section thirty-one through thirty-three. The Community Preservation Committee is recommending town meeting approve seven hundred and fifty thousand for the purchase of forty-one point one acres at forty-six, four hundred and sixty-one Methuen Road for conservation purposes. The CPC notes that this property will allow the town to connect to an existing trail network that runs through the abutting properties. High voltage power lines run through the property is considered a wildlife corridor, providing habitat and movement routes for various species. To purchase the parcel of land, six hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and twenty-five would be transferred from the Open Space Reserve Fund, and the remaining seventy-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five would come from the undesignated fund balance. If approved, the Open Space Reserve Fund will have a balance of zero until funding is appropriate at a future town meeting. Earlier this evening, the CPC voted four and one in favor, and the Board of Selectmen voted three and two in favor of this article, and the Finance Committee is going to report on it now.
Mr. Ash?
Um, when the Finance Committee met on this, uh, a couple months ago, actually only a few weeks ago, we decided we could not come up with an opinion on this, so we want to make the point outright that we are not saying we're against it. What we're saying is we did not have enough time to get the information that we thought we needed. For CPC large projects, we'd prefer to get not only the initial cost, but the annual sustainment costs, and even possible disposal costs at the end of a lifetime. Because we couldn't get the full package, we didn't even have a drawing. We didn't think it was appropriate for us to make an opinion, and because we represent the town meeting, we figured we'd leave it to you to make that decision.
Any discussion? Selectman Plummer.
Uh, good evening. Don Plummer, eighteen Browther Path Road. You know, as mentioned earlier, twenty years ago, this very body voted for CPC for the primary purpose of preserving open space and farmland in town while we still have any left. This parcel is forty-one acres. It's wooded open space on top of Marsh Hill. It's very, very close to the existing Yap Farm, for instance, and those trails in that particular parking lot. It starts at Methuen Road and goes all the way up to the New Hampshire border. A developer could easily build anywhere between four houses and three hundred forty B. Murphy Farm-style rentals or condos. Or we can vote to keep it open space for forever. This is what Drakett wanted with their CPC taxes to be used for. Please vote yes to keep Drakett looking like Drakett.
Ms. Richardson?
Hi. Hi, Kathy Richardson, three sixteen Richardson Road. Um, I'm all in favor of open space, as many of you know, but I have a couple of questions because I recently, you know, for the past couple of years, have been working with community preservation regarding some acreage that I, my family own, and we were posed with several several questions, and I see in front of me is the, um, the prior diagram, was sort of a handwritten, um, you know, colored-in section. So the questions that were asked to me, you know, and sadly I was declined, but, you know, over two years, was that, one, I had to actually go and create a subdivision that I had to record at the Registry of Deeds, and that was required of me and my family by CPC. I do not see that here. I see a handwritten, colored-in, pretty picture. Um, I also am curious what the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar offer would be based on then if there is no subdivision, because CPC can only offer a, an owner, uh, an appraised value based on the number of house lots, uh, to be put into that particular parcel. Again, that is not reflected on what I see here in that pretty picture. Um, the other piece is that I was also asked, one, if there would be ADA accessibility. I do not see that question answered here. I also was asked, um, or there was questions about the cost of the trail system that I was proposing that the family and I would be, uh, basically doing on behalf of CPC. I don't see any cost related to trail work here. I don't see any examples of where the trails would be, and yes, it does connect with Yap Farm, and it is beautiful. However, this is gonna wipe out all the open space money, apparently, until we have more money put back in, according to our tax bills at two percent, and we're asked now to give the family seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with absolutely no questions, no subdivision shown, that can base, we can base seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, and there's no discussion about accessibility, ADA accessibility, or is there any discussion about any of the costs related to putting a trail system into this parcel? I personally would love to see it at some point preserved, but I would like to see those questions if they were asked of me over two years, um, and at significant costs in terms of survey costs and recording costs at the registry. I'm not sure why this particular parcel, albeit a pretty picture, is not also required to, to give us that kind of information before we hand over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and wipe out CDC, open space.
Mr. Moderator?
Please, Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Unfortunately, a lot of this happened before, um, my time, so I can only, I can have the CPC or, um, this, one of the CPC members come up and speak. But we did have an appraisal that was completed, so it is based off of the appraised value. Um, I can't speak to what was required in previous years. Um, I came into this halfway through, so perhaps a member would like to speak.
Selectman, out of order. Selectman Plummer?
There was a full appraisal.
There was a full appraisal done that did determine that there would be four, up to four, 41A house lots on this property. The family is actually asked that we reveal that they have accepted an offer that's substantially below the market value of that appraisal. So, approximately a 25% discount. And there's a very robust access road that runs through the property now, as well as very extensive trails already built. And the Open Space Group has said that they'd be happy to work this into their schedule of building and maintaining trails.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak before Ms. Richardson speaks a second time? Ms. Richardson.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm curious though, so we have this lovely package, we have the trail system, but was the family not required then, as my family was, to go and get the subdivision recorded at the Registry of Deeds? Was that not required of the other family? Because it was required of me at a substantial cost. And I don't understand why, if we're going to do everything and be transparent and be a fair and democratic system, why is it that one family is asked to do A, B, and C when another family is not? I'm not sure about that. But I was requested to bring, to go to the planning board. I was at the planning board several times to come up with a plan, which I then had to take to the registry and record. So, I'm just saying, as a democratic body, if it's fair, one, why are we jumping hoops through to wipe out CPC without the same process being applied to the second parcel?
Mr. Moderator, I can answer that.
Ms. Hodge. Let me, Ms. Foster.
So, the significant difference was that they're selling the entire property and your property, you were selling a portion of it?
And that makes a different how? I'm not really sure. There's 10 acres that I was going to work with and work with, and this is 40, but the process should be the same. That doesn't matter. I had to do a subdivision.
Assistant Town Manager.
So, when you're selling or transferring property, you have to have a survey that shows the bounds in a legal way for a surveyor or an engineer. This property as an entirety, the parcel in its whole, is being transferred, so that already exists as the property was recorded. The property that you were in discussions around was only a portion of it, so it needed to be professionally surveyed, delineated, and recorded so that there were distinct parcels to be transferred and not to be transferred. So, it was a different scenario.
But we still don't have the subdivision that shows how many house lots that we're basing the 751.
Yes, it is included in the appraisal.
It is in the appraisal?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to let David Hadras for the record.
Sorry. Nancy McDonald, 6 Quill Drive. Speaking, I don't want to speak for the whole Finance Committee, but from myself and my experience on the Finance Committee, one of the things that makes these decisions very difficult is we know what the purchase price would be through the CPC funds, but we have no idea, no information is given to us as to what the operating costs of the town maintaining these properties. And when we're looking at the budget issues that we have, it would really help us to know, myself at least, what these operating costs and how that is financially going to affect the town for buying a $750,000 piece of property. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm going to close discussion. All those in favor of the motion will vote with the green button. All those who are opposed to the motion will vote with the red button. The Board of Selectmen does recommend approval. Voting is open. Voting is now closed. The motion carries. Article 15, Ms. Foster.
Move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, as most recently amended, to amend the general bylaws by inserting a new bylaw establishing various revolving funds, specifying the departmental receipts to be credited to each fund, the departmental purpose of programs for which each fund may be expended, and the entity authorized to expend each fund, such bylaws to provide as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Just making sure the slides are.
Thank you, sorry.
This article requests town meeting under Mass. General Law to establish and authorize expenditures of the town's revolving funds. Town meeting is required to vote on the spending limits of each of these funds annually. Establishing revolving fund allows the town to manage receipts and expenses from specific departmental programs without the need for further appropriation as long as expenditures do not exceed the fund balance. This law is designed to streamline the financial management of specific departmental activities by allowing them to operate with a degree of autonomy, especially if the program generates its own revenue. After an in-depth analysis, the active town revolving funds are identified and are on the screen and posted in the warrant. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee unanimously recommend approval of Article 15.
All right, is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, unless it's shown, no. Hearing and seeing no discussion, we will vote on the motion. If you are in favor of the motion, vote green. If you are opposed to the motion, vote red. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The motion carries. Article 16, Ms. Foster.
Move that the town vote to transfer from retained earnings the sum of $100,000 in supplementary appropriations to be used in conjunction with money appropriated under Article 7 of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting to be used to cover expenditures associated with the water service contract during the current fiscal year. This is a routine article that allows the town to amend the current year budget, often because of changes in revenue, unforeseen expenses, or other financial needs that arise after the initial budget is approved. At this time, the Kenwood Water Department is requesting an increase of $100,000 to cover unexpected expenses related to service contracts for repair and maintenance of the lines. The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend approval of Article 16. The Finance Committee would like to speak now.
The Finance Committee agrees this was a bookkeeping item. We are not out here voting against this or recommending against it. We're just saying at the time of the warrant, we did not have numbers. But now that we have the article, we believe it can move forward for your vote.
Motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will vote by electronic voting. If you are in favor of the motion, vote green. If you're opposed, vote red. Voting is closed. The motion carries. Article 17, Ms. Foster. Oh, Ms. Menugia, excuse me.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant, on behalf of the town, easements to public utility companies for the purpose of installing and maintaining utility company infrastructure on property located at 144 Greenmont Avenue and 1530 Bridge Street, Drakett, as recorded with the registry in Book 32840, Page 275, inclusive of the rights and privileges as printed in the warrant. So, this property is owned by the town of Drakett. The yellow portion highlights where the primary utilities will come from Bridge Street and to service the project for senior housing. And this vote would authorize the Select Board to then vote themselves to grant easements for gas, water, sewer.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. On discussion. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of this will vote with the green button. All opposed will vote red. This requires a two-thirds vote. Voting is now closed. The motion carries. Article 18, Ms. Menugia.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire, on behalf of the town, easements for the following purposes: roads, sidewalks, vehicular, bicycle, or pedestrian access or passage; water, drainage, sewer, fiber optic cable, electricity, and other utilities, where such easements are required at no cost to the town and are required pursuant to a land use permit, site plan review, agreement for utility or drainage, agreement for construction, use, operation, and maintenance of infrastructure, or memorandum of understanding.
Motion is made and seconded. On discussion.
Yep, so effectively, there are projects, typically roadway projects, whereby an easement is needed for any number of these things. And this would give the Select Board the ability to vote those when they come up, rather than requiring that developers and projects wait for a town meeting to be held.
Is there any discussion? Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. This requires a two-thirds vote. If you are in favor, please vote green. If you're opposed, please vote red.
Hi. It is?
Oh, okay. Please, David Hadras for the record.
Emily Francis, 35 Doyer Avenue. Is this any way, a backhanded way, to override the zone mapping for Article 27?
Would you yield to the Assistant Town Manager?
No. It has nothing to do with MBTA or Article 27.
Okay, so there's just no possible way?
No.
Okay, just making sure, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Once again, we will vote by electronic means. If you are in favor of this motion, please vote green. If you're opposed, please vote red. Voting is now open. This requires a two-thirds vote. Voting is now closed. The motion passes. Article 19, Selectman Archinski.
Good evening, Tony Archinski, 76 D Street. This article seeks to just put one member of the Open Space Committee on the Community Preservation Committee. It looks like a big, long article, but it's really the old bylaw in comparison to the new bylaw. So, we're just trying to put one Open Space Committee member on the CPC.
Would you make the motion, Ms. Archinski?
Yes, make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing no discussion. All those in favor, vote green. All those opposed will vote red. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The motion passes. Article 20, Selectman Taylor.
Just want to make sure I have the actual worded motion in front of me for everybody. So, I move that the town vote to exempt itself in accordance with the terms of Chapter 135 of the Massachusetts Special Acts of 2024, specifically Section 124K2I, an act of modernizing firearm statute, so-called, whereby permitting licensed firearm owners to legally carry their personal firearms within municipal administrative buildings and facilities, excluding schools and school events held on school property.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion. Sir?
Josh Gillis, 12 M Street. I'm a firearm instructor with the State Police, certified through the State Police, and I just want to speak specifically on this. When the law passed, it was a nightmare. They, what they did is they forced it through and then now there's committees trying to fix everything. And these are, this is one of them, and I'm for this. This is for licensed firearms owners and I just think that for someone who just have to know what grounds municipality, what's county-owned, and be stepping on it and then find themselves in trouble, I think is stupid. So, I'm for this and I hope it passes. Thank you.
On discussion. Madam?
Kate Crawford, 41 Hillcrest Road. I'm a part-time assistant reference librarian at our local public library. I urge folks to vote no on Article Number 20. We should not be exempt from Chapter 135 of the Mass. Special Acts, Section 124K2I. I personally do not understand why anyone other than law enforcement would feel the need to carry a gun into a municipal building. The presence of a gun in these government spaces, including such spaces as correctional facilities or the public children's library, only threatens to unnecessarily escalate life's tense situations or it can be potentially hazardous due to accidents involving firearms. If it isn't permitted for citizens to carry firearms on school grounds or school events and shouldn't be permitted in our public libraries, town halls, or other local government facilities. As municipal employee, a homegrown Drakett local, and a Massachusetts citizen, I feel far safer knowing firearms are prohibited from state, county, and municipal spaces. Keep our public safe. Do not permit legal carry of personal firearms in these facilities. Massachusetts has the lowest gun death rate in the country. Let's help keep it that way. Vote no. Thank you.
Madam?
Elizabeth Foster, 65 Coach Drive. I support this article. Number one, because it supports our Select Board actually seeking exemptions from laws we don't agree with. And it's something that we may want to do with the MBTA in the future if it comes up. And number two, in a state that is continually ripping away our rights and our voice, this is a way to keep our rights. And the state has already ripped away so many gun rights and banned guns that my father can't even gift me a gun until he dies. And even then, I might not be able to take it from him. So, I completely support this. Let's exempt ourselves from as many tyrannical laws in this state as we can.
Thank you. Sir?
Please. Match A, 25 Hillcrest Ave., as a gun owner. A good guy with a gun is better to be around than a bad guy with a gun. If you're ever in a situation when you wished there was a cop around and there happens to be somebody with a firearm and they know how to use it, they could save your life. So, you should probably think of that before you would vote another way. That's it.
Sir?
George Delo, 9 Bailey Road, Drakett. Licensed gun owners are the most law-abiding citizens we've got, and we support our local police, we support law and order. Guns don't hurt anybody. People hurt people when they misuse these things. Why take away those rights? And if we think that outlaws are going to obey a no-gun rule, 99% of all your mass shootings, probably 90 anyway, occur in so-called gun-free zones because they just don't regard life. And so none of us are going to shoot up the town, so.
Mr. Cowan?
Yeah, Rich Cowan, 12 Green Line Ave. If I may, Mr. Taylor. The, I just wanted to ask what this specific, now this only applies to concealed carry? Is that true?
Massachusetts is a concealed carry state, so although I am not carrying right now, I could be, and nobody would know. This Massachusetts is the strictest gun laws states pretty much in the country, and they left this exemption there for this purpose. And it is all concealed carry.
How large a gun is?
Please direct all questions to moderator, Mr. Cowan.
Mr. Moderator, I wanted to ask the petitioner if, what's the size of the gun? What's the maximum size of the gun that would be allowed under this?
There is no size, but it'd be very hard for somebody to conceal, carry a rifle and walk. But I most definitely can put my, you know, World War II-era 1911 .45 ACP within my waist.
So in terms of caliber? Okay. Yes.
If I had another role on me, I could hide a .500 Magnum, but I can't.
Look, look. Hey, Mr. Taylor, I'm just asking questions because people might want to know the answers, okay? Okay. The other, the final question. There was a dispute. Out of order! You're out of order! To the moderator, there was a dispute over at Drakett TV about 10 years ago where a member of the board was accused of carrying a gun into the offices of DATV by a number of members of the board. That member, the police were involved. Now, the DATV is not specifically part of the town of Drakett, however, now money is routed into an enterprise fund. Would this, if this was passed, would this affect what happened in that situation? Maybe Mr. Zimini could speak to that if there's any question.
DATV is not a municipal-owned administrative building, so this would have no ruling on that. Their own bylaws would govern that.
DATV bylaws, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Merrill?
Karen Merrill, 7 Clyde Ave. Clarification, please, on the part that talks about excluding schools and school events held on school property. We are in a school right now. This is not a school event. So what takes precedent, being in a school or being a non-school event? So could somebody come in here with a gun?
School property defines that. This is a gun-free zone regardless of the outcome of this article.
No, regardless of what's happening in this building.
Correct, but it's still a school. School grounds. So we would not be allowed to carry within schools, period.
How about on the fields?
School grounds, not allowed.
All right. Making sure. Thank you.
It only covers town-owned municipal buildings. Administrator?
As a public employee.
Name and address for the rec, sorry.
Speaking again, Joshua Marcus, 78 Frederick Street, Number 43. Having seen the caliber of argument here and the tempers flaring, and also having had to deal with people who are, say, owing, having had to deal with the people who are very loud today, and also people who have come into various municipal buildings owing money, and having seen the reactions they have to their bills, I have no interest in seeing someone bringing that into a municipal building. I have never been able to tell what a good guy with a gun looks like. I'm curious if we could direct a question to our police officers to give a training on that, because I'm not familiar with what a good guy with a gun looks like, except that badge and a uniform. I'm very serious. And I think it's, I think it's very inappropriate, number one, to try to silence someone talking about the safety of our public employees.
Agreed.
And I think it is very inappropriate to try and intimidate someone, because it just leads to the exact same thing that I'm saying, that what do I say to someone who comes in who owes a bill and is busy with futzing with something? Do I know it's a gun? Do I need to, do I need to take a particular action? Do I need to call the police? Does the police officer who's there on security need to do something to secure the local office? Well, these things happen, so.
I'm not kidding.
I just don't understand why we even think that this is possibly a good idea. And I'm glad that we can at least acknowledge that our children should be protected from it, but it's, it's just mystifying that we would subject our public employees to it.
All discussion must be from the podium. There are police officers who will remove people who are not staying in order. Please refrain from commenting on the crowd. Sir?
Brian Daniel, 61 Donahue Road. By town-owned facilities, does that include CPC land? I think that it does, like the fields and stuff like that. This blocks people, you know, there's people up here saying, oh, this will allow people carrying libraries. You know, most of people probably aren't going to be carrying a library, but I can't go out for a walk in CPC land with a gun. It just seems strange to me. But in addition to that, this is passed in other towns, and the world hasn't come to an end. I know Plymouth passed it, and, you know, there's a lot of ambiguity in the state law, and that's why I was bringing up the fact that, you know, you can't carry in the woods either if it's owned by the town.
Ma'am?
Megan Gagden, 215 Arlington Street. As a gun owner and a mom of two young children, I tell them every day my first job is to keep them safe. I am their first line of defense. I'm not waiting for the police to come. So if I'm out with my children, whether it's on town property, I'll buy it, school property, if I need to use my firearm to protect myself and my children, I'm going to do it. And also, in regards to other people speaking, I'm sorry, but people that are going to follow the law are going to follow the law. People that are not, are not. So that's how that goes. Thanks.
Sir? Pick that microphone up.
John Jackson, 25 Barnum Ave. I had a question. Just clarification. Before 2024, what were the rules and regulations before that? Were people carrying those places and nobody knew and everyone was just as safe before?
No, that was not allowed previous, but this new bill left open this exemption.
Okay. Have we had a history of law-abiding citizens, people that own and carry guns, causing any issues within the town?
I would have to refer to the police chief for that answer.
No, okay. I know from personal experience, being a gun owner and a member of organizations within the town, that we're often asked to help with, you know, public events and, you know, we're part of the community, we stand behind everybody in the market every day, and people are none the wiser. And even though safer with having us there if an incident should arise, so to say that, you know, that magical line should stop when you go into a municipal building is just silly. And again, it doesn't make anyone safer for it.
Ma'am?
Mary Ann Blanchard, 165 Lake Shore Drive.
If you could pick up the microphone a little bit. Thank you.
Did you hear my name?
Yep.
I know that we don't go into schools with guns because we want to protect our children, and I think that any municipal area, I should be able to feel safe, and I know the employees in the building should be able to feel safe. They deal with people who are out of control, as is evidenced by many people here tonight, who did not listen to the rules at all and had to be gavelled down several times. Those people with a gun, the outcome could have been very different. I think that there's no, yes, it could have. And so I just think that it should stay the way it is. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Here it ends. We do have one more discussion? Nope, I'm going to let her speak. Name and address for the record.
Rebecca Sullivan, 12 Radcliffe Road. Can I please just get an explanation, like, can you give me exact locations of everything? Municipal administrative buildings and facilities? Like, what constitutes a facility?
From the recollection talking with the manager and everything else, that would be town hall, DPW, police station, fire station, library, and parks. Town Beach, Harmony Hall. Am I forgetting any? That covers it. That gives it a gist. Anything that's town-owned, that it's administrative or facility, excluding schools, school grounds, or school events.
Any other discussion? After this, I'm going to call for the vote.
Just a question, sorry, this is Josh Gillis in 12, just a question clarification. It's also state and county land, to your point. I just want to make sure that people understand that. So it's not just the grounds, it's parking areas, and land that's owned by a state, town, or county.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to move the question. On this motion, if you are in favor of the motion, please vote green. If you are opposed to the motion, please vote red. This is a majority vote. Article 21, the Assistant Town Manager.
I move that the town vote to remove the text within Section 5.1 Flood Plane and Floodway Overlay District of the Drakett zoning bylaw and replace it with the Section 5.1 Flood Plane and Floodway Overlay District as printed in the warrant.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second. So this is a requirement coming out of FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, who takes care of and administers the National Flood Insurance Program. Properties that are in high-risk zones for flood are required to have insurance to be able to get a mortgage. FEMA has updated, next slide, please, their maps, their requirements, and we are effectively required to adopt these for our residents to continue being able to take advantage of the flood insurance that is offered. The primary changes that they've made are adding references to the building code and some definitions. They have changed the extents of the flood map based on the elevations in some areas, and then they have required permits and set the variance processes. So if town meeting doesn't want to approve this, then ultimately residents won't have the ability to get this flood insurance through FEMA.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here it ends, see and none. We will vote on this motion. It requires a two-thirds vote. If you are in favor, vote green. If you're opposed, vote red. Voting is now closed. The motion carries. Article 22, the Assistant Town Manager.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by replacing Section 7.4 Accessory Dwelling Units in its entirety, amending Section 3.3 Table of Permitted Uses, and adding new definitions to Section 9 as printed in the warrant.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion.
So the blue language that's before you is the language of the law. Effectively, the governor in signing the Affordable Homes Act in August of last year put in place new state requirements and controls over accessory dwelling units, which are now protected by the so-called Dover Amendment. Next slide, please. Accessory dwelling units per this are self-contained housing units that maintain a separate entrance, whether that be directly from outside or through a shared entry hall, that are not larger in gross floor area than 900 square feet, and then they allowed for additional requirements to be placed on these locally. The intent, obviously, is to create additional housing options. Next slide. The general approach from the state is that towns cannot restrict accessory dwelling units any more than they restrict single-family home development. You can see what some of the requirements are and what the things are that they don't allow communities to control any longer. The proposed local zoning would be the local control over accessory dwelling units. Next slide. The language that is being put forth here, which is compliant, allows one accessory dwelling unit by right. Additional units beyond that would require a special permit. It speaks to prohibiting short-term rentals, which is less than 31 days. It outlines how previously existing in-law suites would be handled, and how they could be converted with the issuance of a building permit and compliant work into conforming accessory dwelling units. And then it speaks to the parking. Again, this is, this is the opportunity for local control over these things. Otherwise, the state will effectively take away the local regulation that's currently in place, and we won't have any local say.
On discussion. Ms. Richardson?
Hi, Kathy Richardson, 316 Richardson Road. So again, this, to me, feels reminiscent of our discussion on Article 27, where the state is basically telling us you have to do this. And 900 square feet is not small. I mean, these can be fairly large imprints, and I'm curious about, you know, what we can do as a town to not necessarily have to go through this. We have housing, we have in-law suites already approved, we have a process for that. I'm not sure what the intent would be, short of being somewhat cynical and saying this is to help with the housing that, you know, in terms of the waves of immigrants that are coming here and needing places to go. There's no, you know, there's no wording in the, in the language about neighbors and what happens when all these houses start, or these ADUs become prolific, prolific throughout the town. And, you know, there's no say in terms of what the uses for those, with the exception of the short-term rental, you know, who can be in those, how many people can be in those. You know, it's just concerning that we're, again, allowing the state to come in and basically tell us you have to do this. And I'm curious if there's any recourse that the towns have to not necessarily have to, not necessarily have to do this, you know, in terms of our own rights as a town. It's similar to what we were dealing with in Article 27, in my opinion.
Ms. Menucha?
So this is slightly different from the MBTA. Under the MBTA, each community is required to create their own zoning. With this process for accessory dwelling units, the state has effectively, I think, seen some of the kerfuffle around the MBTA. And in this particular case, they've made it very clear that if we don't pass local requirements that are in compliance with theirs, they will simply take away all of the local controls.
And do what, though? I mean, what's the consequence? And do what? I mean, you're talking about people that have single families that want to put these ADUs in their backyard, et cetera. What can the state do to a private homeowner if we don't do this?
They simply make the local requirements that are currently in the bylaw are, will become illegal.
Okay, so we as a town body should be flooding the state house. That is so unconstitutional, our founding fathers will be rolling in their graves. We should be flooding that state house and demanding a We should be flooding that state house and demanding a recall on whoever put that in place. That is absurd, and God help our country.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing no other discussion. Oh, sir? State your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Frank Agarola, Hampson Street, Draket. So what you're saying is, is that they're allowing people to make apartments at everybody's home?
Ms. Pedersen.
So there's no rules now? Everybody, anybody that wants to build another apartment in their home can do it? There's no zoning anymore?
No, that is not true at all. This is the request to put in place local zoning that continues to control the things that the state allows local control of.
So you're saying now the state can come in and just, if we don't allow people to build an apartment if they want it, the state can come in and say, they can just tell every town what they can do?
Absolutely.
I don't believe that. I don't know why. I'm sorry, I just don't believe that. I think we ought to vote no. I just don't, I don't think the state can tell every town what to do.
They absolutely can.
I'm going to move the, is there any other? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the matter? Sir?
David Ryan, 18 Barnum Road. I'm under the impression right now that the rules as they stand are you can put in the accessory dwellings as you want, and what we're doing with this is defining rules for putting them in in a reasonable manner, whereas we can just have one per housing lot versus right now, you could have as many as you want. So what this does is this controls what the state is telling us to do, where it's free rein versus reasonable development.
Sir?
Sean Kirby, 120 Malwood Ave, Draket, Mass. Just for clarification, if a yes vote says that the town can have their own zoning within the guidelines, if we vote no, the state gets the whole ball of wax. Is that correct? So yes means we keep local control within the state guidelines. If you say no, you give everything back to the state and they get to say what they want. So yes means we have local control. Okay, thank you very much.
That's correct.
Really quickly, Ms. Richardson.
Just, I just want to make sure, because the gentleman was talking about apartments, but this can be a whole separate house. I want people to know that this can be a whole separate house. It doesn't have to be just an apartment. So you're going to have double houses on single lots is what's going to happen.
Ms. Young.
Renee Young, 44 Old Passage Road. So there was actually a news segment on the news this weekend about accessory dwelling units, and it went over the law, and I just happened to be watching it, and I'm kind of obsessed with tiny homes because they're really cute. But basically, it's like an in-law apartment, which we already allow in town, but now you can have, like, you can, it's, in both stories, it was a story about these parents are getting older and their children moved into their family home, and they put an accessory dwelling unit of 900 feet on the property, and that's where their grandparents live now. That is the intent of this. We already allow accessory dwelling units in town through in-law apartments. This is just clarifying the, what do you call it? Guidelines, I think, is what we're trying to do here, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for a vote on this motion. If you are in favor, vote green. If you are opposed, vote red. This is a majority vote. Voting's now open. Voting's now closed, the motion passes. Article 23 has already been discussed, so we will move on to Article 24. Ms., Ms. Madam Manager. We're almost done. We made it, we're almost done.
Hi there. Article 24 is Alternative Methods for Notice of Public Hearings. The motion is very long, and it is in the warrant, so I will skip reading that. In conjunction with the Municipal Modernization Act, which came in the wake of the COVID pandemic, state authorities allow cities and towns to adopt their own websites as alternative methods of notification. In order for a municipality to legally adopt the website as an official posting message for all public bodies of the town, we first have to ask Town Meeting to petition the legislature to allow that change. This article is the last step in that process for Draket at Annual Town Meeting, which was held June 5, 2023. Article 21 asks the body to adopt a special act entitled "An Act Authorizing the Town of Draket to Adopt Alternative Methods for Noticing Public Hearings." That article passed by a majority vote. In the affirmative, this past fall, the town was notified that the legislator had approved Draket's home rule petition, and the town could proceed to the last step, which is acceptance this evening at Town Meeting.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will vote on this article, on this motion, a yes vote is the green button, a no vote is the red button. Voting's now open. Voting is now closed, the motion carries. Article 25, the Draket Sewer Commission. State your name for the record.
My name is Joseph Cludier, Draket Sewer Superintendent. I'll keep this brief because I'm starving. This article is requesting the Town Meeting to increase the Draket Sewer Department inspection fees from a rate of $22 an hour to $50 an hour with a minimum of two hours. The rate has not increased since 2012, and the new proposed rate is aligned with that of surrounding communities.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Yep, motion has been seconded, is there any discussion? Board of Selectmen recommend, as does the Finance Committee, hearing and seeing no discussion. If you are in favor of the motion, vote green. If you are opposed to the motion, vote red. Voting's now open. Voting is now closed, the motion carries. Article 26, Draket Sewer Commission.
All right, once again, my name is Joseph Cludier, Superintendent of the Draket Sewer Department. The next article, we request the Town Meeting to improve a new impact fee for new additions to existing residential homes that will add a bedroom or bedrooms. This would be a one-time fee of $500 per bedroom, and it would be charged as a time of construction. Once again, it is aligned with that of our surrounding communities, and it's basically a fee just to cover the cost of the impact on the sewer infrastructure that's currently in place.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Motion has been seconded, this has been recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, we will vote yes is the green. Uh, I beg your pardon. State your name and address for the record, sir.
Mike Bujwa, 31 Douglas Road. The impact of another bedroom, I think that means somebody's going to sleep in there. I see this as another tax, okay? Yeah, somebody's going to make an addition on their home. They're going to raise the value of their home. Okay, they want to do it, by all means. Okay, at time of construction, doesn't matter, it's just another tax. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will vote on this motion, green for yes and red for no. The vote is now open. The motion does not pass. Article, Article 29, I believe this is the vote petition. Mr. Clermont is here to speak on behalf of the petitioner. If he can name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Turn to Joseph Clermont, office address 490 Textile Ave in Draket. 10 Denley Street is the site of the Cash &amp; Garden Restaurant. The current zoning line splits the lot into B3 business and R3 residential. We're seeking to rezone the lot to all B3. The entire lot is a business use, and the owners of the restaurant have actually purchased the abutting lot at 14 Denley Street, which is the former Coughlin Insurance Building, also a split lot. And the next article requests that 14 Denley also be rezoned to all B3 business. The Planning Board has recommended approval, and we respectfully request your vote to approve. Thank you.
The Board of Selectmen made no recommendation. This requires a two-thirds vote. Motion has been made and seconded, is there a second? Second, is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote, so if you are in favor of the motion, please vote green. If you are opposed, please vote red. Vote is open, sir. Voting's closed, the motion is agreed to. Article 30, Mr. Clermont.
Yes, and I think last but not least, 14 Denley Street is the former Charles Coughlin Insurance Building. The owners want to utilize that building for the restaurant next door. The site is entirely business. The zoning line again splits that lot, B3 and R3, and we're seeking to rezone it to all B3 business. And the Planning Board voted to recommend approval, and we respectfully request your vote for approval. Thank you.
Motion was made and seconded, I must say, please don't leave after this. We have to take a motion to dissolve, we have to vote on it. So don't leave until we vote to dissolve. So motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote, so please, if you are in favor, vote green. If you are opposed, vote red. Again, please don't leave, wait for the final dissolving motion. Voting's open. Voting is now closed, the motion carries. Selectmen Taylor.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I really appreciate the effort of everybody to stay the whole evening, and I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the meeting.
Motion's made, is there a second? All in favor, vote green. All opposed, vote no, or we just say, be dissolved!